Hello, welcome to the city council's December 8th special city council meeting. This is a hybrid meeting with city council, city staff and members of the public participating virtually and in city council chambers in accordance with public health guidelines for in-person meetings and participating remotely to promote social distancing in this federal state and local emergency. Hello, my name is Drew Combs, I'm mayor of Menlo Park for 2021. I'd like to introduce the rest of the city council present and also staff first that are present in chambers. Here in chambers, Vice Mayor Betsy Nash, city council member Jen Willison, city council member Ray Mueller, city manager Starla Jerome Robinson, city clerk Judy Heron, and deputy city manager Justin Murphy. City council members and staff participating remotely include city council member Cecilia Taylor and city attorney Neera Doherty. So there is the one item under regular business for this special meeting. Under regular business, the city council considers recommendations from city staff on policy matters or administrative actions that require city approval. The regular business item is C1, review and recommend the potential housing opportunity sites in land use strategies for initiating the governmental and fiscal reviews to meet the city's regional housing needs allocation as part of the housing element for the planning period 2023 to 2031. Here to present the item is Assistant Community Development Director Deanna Chow.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Combs, members of the city council. I'm Deanna Chow, the Assistant Community Development Director. I'm happy to be here with you this evening. I'm just going to kick off the presentation. So this evening, the housing element team is seeking a city council recommendation for the potential housing sites and landing strategies for initiating the environmental and fiscal review to meet the city's regional housing needs. So here with me this evening, I have Jeff Bradley with the M Group, and then we have a number of teams, team members prepared remotely, but here for the presentation, I would like to introduce both Brittany Bendix and Asher Cone from M Group, who will be leading the presentation this evening, and then we are here to help address questions. Thank you very much.
Hi, members of the council. My name is Asher Cone. I'm from the M Group project teams working on this. I am looking for my colleague Brittany Bendix right now. I appreciate your patience. I'm having trouble finding her, and if it's all right with you, I might, I know, leave Jeff Bradley's in a chance, I can take over the presentation. I'm happy to do that. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, Asher, we're able to hear you. Thank you. And I'm not seeing Brittany in our queue here, so.
Okay, great. And if it's okay with you all, I'm not, again, apologies, my first hybrid meeting. I'd like to share my screen. Is that possible? Great. Great. Hi, again, this is Asher Cone. I'm with M Group, and I'll be going through his presentation tonight. To go through how we're going to go through everything, first, we need a little bit of background and then go through the outreach engagement and updates since we last saw you about a month ago. And then we're going to go into the housing opportunity sites, pros land use strategies, potential housing policies before going over the staff recommendations and how these particular items we're looking for feedback on tonight before going to the next step and explaining how the schedule is going to progress through the end of the month here and onto 2022. So the purpose of the meeting, we're looking at potential housing opportunity sites and land use strategies in order to initiate the environmental fiscal reviews to meet the city's regional housing needs allocation as part of the housing element for this upcoming six cycle planning period 2023 to 2031. And we're going to go with the recommendations again at the conclusion of this presentation, and just to kind of give you an idea of what we're looking at as you read this and listen to me speak, we're recommending rezoning for approximately 3,700 units. And in addition to that, initiating the NOP, looking at studying about 4,000 is for that. In addition, looking at upzoning sites within the Alcomino Real downtown specific plan area and removing the residential cap that's currently there of 680 units. Looking at modifying the affordable housing overlay to allow for up to 100 dwell units an acre for only for 100% affordable developments. And finally, we're recommending the removal of the 10,000 square foot minimum lot size that only currently only sites thousand square feet or more are allowed up to 30 dwellings an acre in the R3 zone. We're saying that should cover all sites owned R3, even ones there 10,000, less than 10,000 square feet. To give you background on what's come before, in the staff report, we have this table, and this shows where the six cycle arena, what we are allotted by ABA and TPC, and then how the buffer works to give us this large number of 3,030 units, but when we're credited with pipeline projects, projects that are currently underway, as well as ADUs, we can get that number down to 1,490 units, bomb right the screen. And we're out of those 1490, we're looking at only units that are below market rate, as you see mostly very low, well, it's a smattering of low and moderate. One of the new considerations is Rena cycle is considering or giving a stronger consideration, should say to fair housing. This was overcoming racial segregation and considering access to food, transit, schools, employment, and parks in these housing sites. So we're, last year, October 26, we presented these four land use strategies. Option A was moderate upzoning throughout the city. Option B, mixed-use development focused on Middlefield Willow. C, mixed-use development focused on downtown Alcomino Real. And D was development focused in downtown Alcomino Real as well as Sharon Heights. That night, council requested additional information and want to discuss this in December 2021, which is now. And Housing Commission provided feedback on some affordable housing strategies recently as well. So this Housing Commission feedback, sorry. The broad idea was to focus on affordable housing strategies, and as you saw with the Rena, we really want to focus on affordable housing production. Doing the focus here, so things were considered during the study session, including increasing inclusion requirements to 20% with refinements to target the lower income levels, expanding the affordable housing overlay. HO, I hear that acronym a lot tonight, and to modify the HO to make competitive with the state's density bonus program. In addition, they discussed setting the average maximum unit size. They said that was too complicated, but we want to encourage smaller units in the affordable housing as well as establishing, they said establishing a slight density scale was complicated for developers and maybe doing something more straightforward would help promote affordable housing development. In addition, we're just talking about increasing the base density and height limits in the Alcomino Real and downtown specific plan area in order to make the 15% inclusionary ordinance feasible. They also discussed reducing parking requirements for projects that half mile major transit stop or within Alcomino Real downtown specific plan to really focus on the transit opportunities within the city. Discuss increasing the commercial linkage fee and including specialized policies and programs for people with disabilities, veterans and seniors. I've heard a lot of community input on this, this commission agreed with. So there's also in this additional feedback to minimize displacement was part of addressing their horrible furthering affair housing, considering tenant relocation assistance programs, looking at policies around rent caps and just cause evictions. Considering a fair chance ordinance, which would limit background checks, considering originally rental assistance, which is like a big thing that came out of response to the COVID-19 pandemic, consider red tag ordinance in the case of natural disaster, a rental registry to track rental costs and include policies provided by the Housing Leadership Council of San Mateo County, maybe do a lot of work in this area as well. Another consideration was safe parking areas for unhoused individuals living in RVs. So that was really great feedback we got from Housing Commission, or sorry, and we also spoke with affordable housing developers. We had several meetings with developers here and they said was that housing, in order to get affordable housing projects funded and built, land availability and price was really a huge sticking point, being able to afford acquiring the land and getting something done in the land and every small amount of time for their funders to kind of get everything together. Big part of those having zoning densities be high enough, as well as, as I mentioned, getting funding aligned, both getting additional funding sources, stronger funding sources, and getting funding sources in the same timeline. Some of the insights we got from these conversations, we got a lot that parcels between a half acre or one acre were suitable for supportive housing, seniors housing, housing people with special needs, things like that, and parcels that were one to five acres were ideal for outside affordable housing, a little bit larger, you could fit a lot more units on them or better for more of the broad affordable housing. Ideal densities that we heard are 50 to 100 units per acre and a four to five FAR floor area ratio to kind of sort things depending on site plans. Um, sorry, so policies that we heard from these developers, they talk about expanding the affordable housing overlay to cover more sites in the city, waiving fees and other financial hurdles to kind of bring their overall cost a little bit lower. Reusing parking standards, removing discretionary review, and a decent will talk about a little bit further, we talk more detail of policies. Um, they mentioned the senior housing often has lower parking requirements because fewer seniors drive cars generally prefer to like go either walkable in their neighborhood or use transit. And senior housing often also has more community support. Mentioned that providing land grants potentially through a housing trust program or other ways helps offset the cost of land. As sure you all know, land's extremely expensive in the peninsula anyways to either subsidize or see the land donated is extremely useful. And they also mentioned decked finished port through the cities also, of course, always welcome. We also spoke with market rate housing developers about what they see as, you know, how they might build a bit or build more market rate housing in the city. So things we heard from them, there was concern over the 20% inclusionary for a below market rate. If we go from 15, 20%, they were, some people we spoke with worried that they might make a tough project viable. It kind of depends on data sources and the state of the market. There's some back and forth there. Parking sharing agreements may support lower parking requirements is something if it's like a mixed use development, but parking can be used by different, you know, if it's like an office, they can use parking during the day, then when the office goes back home, residents can come in, things like that might help lower parking requirements generally. Mineral mystery review helps manage construction costs, reduces uncertainty, just kind of knowing when they'll hear back from the city and who they'll be hearing back from helps them strategize and there's generally support for more objective review guidelines to help get kind of meet the city where they are on a quicker timeframe. So that background, now I'm going to talk about opportunity sites. So we have 51 sites, which has several changes since we last were before you. The biggest change, it's a lower number. A huge reason for that is that we consolidated adjacent parcels at the same owner. This kind of was more realistic in terms of what sort of development we'd see. Ideally, they'd be able to consolidate parcels already one ownership. We removed parcels with neighborhood serving grocery stores that are really critical to serving. Yeah, people in the community who need the fresh produce. We also removed sites with limited net new housing potential. There's already a lot of housing on the site. Replacing it might not actually do much. We remove parcels with active project applications. In addition, we added sites in Sharon Heights, the Sharon Green Apartments and Seven Oaks Apartments. This was a response to what we heard from council, and then we did some pretty detailed site analysis and said that both these apartment complexes, there was about an acre of land that could potentially support additional housing to the housing that's already there. So we have site sheets, they're including the staff report, they begin on page 24 of that. So these have detailed information as well as maps of all these sites. And just kind of give you an idea, again, this is the staff report, but I realized this table here has a lot going on, so it may be helpful if I talk through it as our potential scenarios. Within 51 sites with about 55 acres available for, I say, that'd be suitable for affordable, 100% affordable housing. We looked at historic development transit affordable housing in the Bay Area and the peninsula and in Menlo Park. And we thought about how our policies might affect these trends. And we thought that, you know, a reasonable estimate for development of these sites would be about 20%, which equals about 11 acres within the six cycle timeframe. So if we had 11 acres of these sites that were able to develop a support 100% affordable housing at 100 dwell units per acre, which is one of the policy considerations that we're considering. This would equal about 1,100 sites, 11 times 100. So this table shows is if we took this 11 acres and we had two development pathways, we have the 15% inclusionary BMR requirement, and we're considering increasing that 20%. So there's kind of this split down the middle here. And I hope you can see my cursor, because that might help this go by. So in both of these pathways, we're looking at 11 acres, 1,100 units. And if you remember, our Rena number of 1490 minus 1,100 means that we have 390 units left over that we need to develop in order to meet Rena. And these units we see developing through that inclusionary portion of market rate development. So we have the 1490, these pathways. But here, the second row is where they change, where under the 15% inclusionary requirement, we would need 2,210 total units to hit that 390, 390, 15% 2,210. For a 20% inclusionary, we would need fewer units because we have 20%. And this brings us down to 1,560 market rate units needed to hit that 390. And this, sorry, so kind of add these up and with 15% pathway, we'll need 3,700 total units. With 20% pathway, we'd need just over 3,000, 3,050 units. And this is kind of our development potential scenario that we would see would get us to Rena with this 11 acres of 100% affordable development. We see that happening on, I guess, that 51 sites throughout the city. These maps were also in your staff report. There's a lot going on. This is something I'm going to try and walk through. So each site we have numbered, and then we have coded by the size of the site. So sites are less than a half acre in pale yellow, half acre to just under one acre in green. One to five acre sites are in purple and sites that are greater than five acres are in blue. We have the total number of sites citywide in each of these categories tally next to that. In addition, we noted which of these sites are reuse sites with an R. You can see those like 46 and five. Reuse sites means they were in the fifth cycle housing element, and there's still capacity to redevelop. And HCD says that if we want to reuse these sites, which we are, we do, we need to have them zoned to be at least 30 units per acre. And if there's if an application comes in with 20% below market rate or more, then they are able to develop by right. So that's what the R sites, there's seven of these in our 51 sites. We also have, you can see here, 13 CC stands for religious facility. Under a roughly new state law, AB 1851, religious facilities can redevelop half their parking lots with housing. So what this, less than half acre means, we tally only what would be half the parking lot for the sites. We have three law would be suitable for for development in Menlo Park. And we tallied that half the parking lot for them. So again, this is downtown, you see Alcomino Real come through here, and there's Middlefield, the northeast corner. And this is the site indicator map showing where we are in Menlo Park. I'm going to get to the second column. So this portion of section is described a little bit over here, but I think it's worth kind of going to a bit more detail. We looked at these sites, especially some of these larger sites, and we thought that you know, speaking with affordable housing developers, it's very difficult for them, as said, to acquire large sites to get the funding to do that. And it's difficult also to get the funding, you know, for example, this two SGS site, which is believed about 17 acres. It's not just purchasing 17 acres of land, it's then administering 17 acres of affordable housing, which can also be very difficult. So we thought, okay, what if these sites as part of potential redevelopment can have a portion of affordable housing. So we thought that we broke into two categories, either two acres of affordable housing development, or we have some in Sharon Heights that are one acre of affordable housing development. Again, you have those tallied as a way to give more opportunities throughout the city for 100% affordable housing as well as, you know, disperse 100% affordable housing through different areas of the city. And finally, this half mile from major transit stop, that's that blue halo that comes around here. When this shows is, I'm pretty sure for a half mile from not just Caltrain, but certain bus stops throughout the area and sites that fall within this half mile radius, which include sites only a portion of those, like these two. They're eligible for certain state density bonus for affordable housing on top of what the city allows. Or in our case, we're looking at city policies that might go further than what the state gives for housing. So here you see Sharon Heights, you can see Sand Hill Road coming through here and the two churches with St. Bead's on Suntony. Here. In addition to the Sharon Heights Shopping Center, that one acre is about equal to that parking lot on the north side of the parcel there. Finally, the Willow Road, which comes through here, we have a few sites on that, including the seven, eight, or some of those agglomerated parcels I mentioned previously. And the Flood Park site is up on the northern edge of the map.
Mr. Cone, can I have you, second, there's a question from the dais.
Hi, Mr. Cone, thank you so much. Can you go back to one of those maps, maybe the one before it, because there were more. Can you just clarify for me the, is this the, what are you, not chunking carving out thing that's written about in the staff report? Can you explain a little bit more about the carving out and how that's being represented on this map? Because some of these sites are larger, and I apologize if you said that already and I missed it.
No, for sure. It's, it's worth explaining again, for sure. So what this represents, it's represented by these circles, the blue, it's kind of like salmon here. It's, should we believe is a way to develop 100% affordable housing on larger sites or on sites that are pretty crowded, to kind of put a straightforward way. Then otherwise, it would be difficult for affordable housing developer to purchase the entire parcel outright. But we think that with the policies we are considering, we'd be able to portion off a section of these sites for affordable housing developers to get in agreement with a developer, the existing property owner to get affordable housing built on these sites.
So do you envision that the existing building on those parcels kind of remain or, and then the affordable housing is kind of on a parking lot or in an unused utilized area? Or are you envisioning that there's some kind of teardown and, and part of it developed as affordable, 100% affordable? And part of it, I don't know, office or something else?
Yeah, um, I think the answer would be both, or it would depend on the site. Depending on the condition of buildings on the site, and we go into a little bit of that in the site sheets. So I think that, you know, for these we're looking at, I think it's more likely, in my opinion, I'm not a affordable housing developer, but after speaking with a few of them, I'm more likely to be built on a vacant or be part of a complete site redevelopment. It really depend on the conditions of the site and market conditions broadly.
And then, and then so citywide, you're distributing, so you haven't proportioned off these carve-outs based on kind of speaking to the property owner or developers, but it's on kind of trying to get a distribution throughout the city of the affordable housing. It, how you arrived at which, or just every large site you've indicated a carve-out?
Every site greater than five acres, yes. Yeah, sorry, you broke up a bit in the beginning of that question, so.
Well, like for the, the pink ones, the pink ones on the Sharon Heights map, they were, had the one acre dots. But the pink ones on the other map you were just on don't have the dots.
Yeah.
And how the dots got put, where they got put.
For sure. So for this one, 49, for example, that's currently an apartment complex. So rather than talking about tearing down an apartment complex with several residents in it, we looked at kind of a site review and said, okay, we think there's about an acre here where we could build affordable housing for this parcel right across the road. That's an office with a fairly big parking lot, but it's a little bit of an older office, we thought. You know, looking at the data behind these sites and kind of driving around, walking around, that'd be more likely to be an entire rebuild for that one, whereas that'd be less likely for the site across the road.
Okay, thank you so much for letting me interrupt you.
Yeah, no problem. Yeah, I can't see who's there. So if anyone else wants to interview, please let me know. That's it, back to, sorry.
You were, I have a question.
Hi, can we go back to that slide? And so, and I think you're right, actually, with respect to 2111 and 49, those were recently revitalized. But my question to you is along 48, four and three, where you see, but actually, it's actually 48, just 48, three and four. Gosh, I wish I brought my glasses. I, so even though that the zoning is recommended in this area, are we I just want to make sure that I see the carve-out and that, that makes sense. But are we zoning this for mixed use? We're not, we're not eliminating current use on these parcels, right?
Correct. We're going to go into that with the land use and housing policies, but yes, that's correct.
Great. So I just wanted to make sure, because I think there, you know, I just wanted to make sure that it was still been mixed use, I think.
Yeah, is it okay to get into these potential land use strategies now? Take sounds as yes, because that's how I can get on this side of things. So we're looking at potential land use strategies to basically ways to get this affordable housing built and the kind of largest one in terms of scope is modifying the Alcomino Real downtown specific plan. I mentioned earlier, staff has recommendation to remove the residential development campus, 680 units to allow more USP built in this area. We also are, you know, we're interested in feedback on increasing the base level density to at least 30. you know, we're interested in feedback on increasing the base level density to at least thirty dwelling units an acre across all, or across all sub areas. Um, the reason for that at least, that there's certain, there's currently a few sub areas, um, station area, west and east, and some other areas around Caltrain Station that, uh, that allow for over thirty units per acre, but not downzone those, we keep those where they were and then, um, allow for, basically get everyone else cut up to that thirty units per acre. Establishing minimum density of twenty dwelling units across all sub areas for residential development within this specific plan area. We'd also consider reviewing development standards such as height and parking ratios in this area and allow residential development on identified city-owned parking classes. We'd also, um, consider rezoning commercial sites. Um, this would be allowing residential uses and shares the maximum base density again of, um, at least thirty dwelling units per acre. We would maintain some level of commercial uses, um, as well as, you know, something we're looking for tonight, kind of getting to Councilman Dores' question. Um, seeking feedback on whether housing should replace is not residential use or be mixed use. Should we provide it and what level will we be discussing mixed use at? So that's something we really want feedback on, so thank you for the question. In addition, um, we can modify the housing, formal housing overlay, the HO. Uh, we increased the maximum density bonus to a hundred dwelling units per acre. Uh, this would put it over the, um, current state law allows for eighty dwelling units per acre for a hundred percent affordable projects. This would go above and beyond that. We'd also, uh, want feedback on extending the HO to sites beyond, currently it's the specific plan area and R four S AHO, we want to go beyond the the boundaries. And we'd also, uh, want feedback on modifications, fee waivers and development standards as part of the HO. And then I alluded this a little bit earlier, but, uh, looking at modifying R three zoning around downtown. This, uh, currently R three, R three zoning says if they, um, a site can only get up to thirty dwelling units per acre, but it's ten thousand square feet or more, and we'd look at removing that middle lot size so that any R three zoned. Uh, we have some additional strategies, um, looking at opportunities for mixed use development. Uh, this, the particularly in the C four, C two and C two A districts, as well as, um, increasing this below market rate inclusionary zoning requirements. This is that two pathway table that I showed a few slides ago. Currently, housing developments of twenty or more have fifteen percent requirement, so a hundred unit development, for example, fifteen of those units would have to be for below market rate. And we're considering on moving that to fifteen now twenty, so in that gain of five below market rate units would be in that hypothetical hundred unit development. Uh, this the applicable only for project twenty or more units, nineteen units would be ten percent, um, and, uh, zero to four, or one to four, I suppose, um, units, uh, would do not have, uh, below market rate inclusionary. Good night, you know. Apologies for that delay. Uh, we're also looking at, um, potential housing policies. So, um, we have a few of these, basically, there's this, um, affordable housing strategy of increasing the commercial linkage fee as well as cost reduction strategies, uh, to support the financing of affordable housing in Menlo Park. Commercial linkage fee, uh, this would be a fee, this is a fee currently charged on non-residential development to support new affordable housing projects. There's a twenty seventeen study that recommended increasing this linkage fee to twenty-five to fifty dollars per square foot. Um, you see this recommendation, this would put in the park about on par with you know, the county and neighboring cities, and it would be an increase from where we are now. Um, we're also have these cost reduction strategies, ministerial review processing. Uh, in this kind of obviously provides cost and time savings to developers, fewer meetings, better sense of the, um, time scale for when, uh, things will happen. It also reduces, um, SEQA that is required for affordable housing project, uh, some of these mysteriously reviewed, there's, um, a lot less than needs to go into SEQA, which also drastically reduces the, um, costs for affordable housing developments. Addition, uh, fee waivers and reductions. These, uh, if we, if the city competitiveness for sites, uh, just kind of bring down their total financing needs. In addition, there is, uh, reducing parking requirements. This is something we heard, uh, costly, not just for installation, but also for maintenance and continued use. Um, and that number of fifty thousand, hundred fifty thousand dollars per stall is kind of a range given us by different developers, depending on if it's at grade, kind of a flat parking lot or part of a parking structure. And, um, this is also something, you know, I talked about the senior housing, also generally affordable housing projects often have fewer parking needs, um, especially if they're in a, uh, near a major transit stops, this kind of matches the, uh, park parking use to the parking provided in affordable housing development. So these are, uh, going back to staff recommendations, this is what, uh, we're coming to today to discuss. Um, so here the, we recommend starting up the four four thousand units and initiating the NO, by the end of the month, I'll get into that with the next steps. Rezoning for approximately three thousand seven hundred units dispersed throughout the city. As I said, it's predominantly in, um, counties two through five. Um, time up zoning sites within the Alcuna Real Downtown Specific Plan area to at least thirty dwelling units per acre at base level. And, uh, this minimum density of twenty dwelling units per acre in this specific plan area, as well as reducing, removing the residential cap. Uh, recommend modifier for a hundred percent affordable elements and removing that ten thousand square foot to thirty dwelling units per acre. Um, in addition, we're looking for feedback on modifying, uh, non-residential zoning broadly to allow residential, um, as well as considering potential development standards that would encourage mixed use development. Uh, looking at feedback on amending this, uh, BMR ordinance that would, and increasing the inclusionary zoning from twenty, from fifteen to twenty percent for projects of twenty or more units. Um, before I get to next steps, I actually want to jump back because I realize I, um, there's something on the map that I should go back to, so if you bear with me. So on this map, um, there's two additional sites that are not on here, but I want to point out, um, I know you all received the letter and we have it in the staff report, but, um, apologize, it may continue up. There is a VA site that's part of the VA complex here that, um, is being considered for affordable housing, I believe it's right about here, and there's, um, a site on Pierce that I believe is like just off the map. Um, there's just two additional sites being considered for housing, um, that aren't on this iteration of the map. So I just want to jump back and get to that, uh, before going to next steps. Okay, um, so, back here, um, we, um, as I mentioned, we, um, have a summer twenty tentative date for the NOP that allows to kick off the IR process, and it's critical that we get that done by the end of the year. Um, so really hoping to get that recommendation, we can go forward with that. And then there's going to be a planning commission scoping session that will take place in twenty twenty-two, uh, late January twenty twenty-two, I should say. And you can see that, um, this is the most up-to-date project schedule. Uh, you can see both meetings and community meetings, uh, that are going to be taking place, especially in the winter and spring of twenty twenty-two. You can all see how these review periods stack onto each other to allow us to meet our, um, project schedule as well as to get the final deadline of having a certified housing element on January fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, so thank you very much for listening to me tonight, uh, looking forward to hearing questions and hearing from the public, and I believe, um, some colleagues in the audience might be able to answer questions as well as they come up. So I'm going to go on mute and thank you once again.
Thank you, Mr. Cone, um, and to just, um, confirming that that's the end of the staff presentation, staff consultant presentation. Okay, cool. Um, city, Karen, let's call for a public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on tonight's regular business item, C one, review and recommend the potential housing opportunity sites and land use strategies for initiating the environmental and fiscal review to meet the city's regional housing need allocation as part of the housing element for the planning period of twenty twenty-three through twenty thirty-one. Please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cellphone, you may press star nine now. Our first speaker will be Julie Shanson.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you so much and thank you, uh, City Council. I think it is excellent that you are thinking about upzoning in districts two through five. It is, um, egregious that the general plan update that upzoned District One to one hundred units per acre did not do the same across the entire city. If a hundred units per acre is too much for a given area, it's certainly too much for District One, where it is very difficult to access public transportation and services. I am also very excited that, uh, creative solutions are being proposed to you like, uh, building housing where currently exists parking and doing some infill on, uh, mixed use, currently mixed used sites. Uh, thank you very much for considering, uh, redoing some of the exclusionary zoning that currently exists in our city. That's it.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Lorena Coffey.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, hi, I just want to, um, express as a resident, a long-term resident of Menlo Park. Um, just my concern with the disproportional, um, housing density, um, that is in District One, um, to the other districts, so I'm, I'm really excited. Um, as previously stated, for my, my fellow Menlo Parkan, um, that, yeah, that is being recommended that the zoning be, um, the upzoning of districts two through five also be done simultaneously as District One. Um, if not, to, I would say, actually do more of zoning of District Two through Five and less of District One, because there's already been um, so much development, um, housing development within District One, so, um, so yeah, I just wanted to, uh, offer my voice there. I've lived in District One for more than thirty years, off and on, maybe within those thirty years, three of those years I was away, but, um, yeah, this is, uh, gives me hope, so, um, and I wanted to just offer that we have a, um, we've created a nonprofit, um, that is a community land trust. Um, it's called Valley Community Land Trust. So, um, yeah, I just wanted to offer that. Thank you so very much for all the work that you do to help make our city better and balanced. That's all.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Kalisha Weber or Webster.
Uh, good evening, council members. My name is Kalisha Webster and I am a housing advocate for people with development and other disabilities with housing choices. As part of the housing element, all cities are required to provide an assessment of the housing needs of people with developmental and other disabilities, as well as create policies and programs to address their housing needs. For persons with a developmental disability, most of whom rely on SSI with a maximum payment of less than a thousand dollars per month or work part-time in low-wage jobs, the greatest barrier to living independently is cost. Currently, seventy-seven percent of Menlo Park adults with developmental disabilities still live at home because of the lack of deeply affordable housing. In addition, a growing body of data indicates that people of color with disabilities experience higher rates of housing discrimination and severe rent burden than other people of color without disabilities or whites with disabilities. Appreciate, uh, uh, recommendations before you tonight, um, from staff and support the many land use policies that staff are recommending, um, which prioritize the development of more affordable housing at a range of income levels. As you consider these policies, I urge you to consider ways in which Menlo Park can affirmatively further our housing for people with developmental and other disabilities, um, as far as when, um, the changes, the proposed changes to the affordable housing overlay zone, um, agree with expanding the area which falls under this. Um, in addition, um, at the addition of, um, state density bonus law, which already includes incentives and concessions for projects which include preferences for disabled beds, homeless persons and transition age foster youth. The city should go further and add inclusion of persons with developmental disabilities who would benefit from coordinated onsite services um, as qualifying for the same density bonus concessions. Um, also support increase the BMR, the below market rate requirement to twenty percent inclusionary. Um, there should also be a added flexibility of our lower inclusionary requirements if they target deeper levels of affordability or include set of sites for special needs populations who would benefit from coordinated onsite services. Um, support modifications to provisions such as fee waivers, development standards, such as heightened parking ratios. Um, also consider lowering parking ratios for developments with set of sites for trend dependent populations such as people with developmental and other disabilities. Um, and then as far as the commercial linkage fees goes, I think this is really important as well. Um, if you look at neighboring Palo Alto, their commercial linkage fees are nearly twice as high as Menlo Park. Uh, this fund is extremely important to the feasibility of affordable housing development. Um, in addition to, uh, the staff recommendations, I would also um, suggest adding points to projects which include deepest levels of affordability and are set of sites for special needs populations. Um, such as, sorry, extremely low income housing. Um, and thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Karen Grove, followed by Nisha Sillian.
Hi, thank you. Um, I am Karen Grove. I serve on the Housing Commission, but I am speaking for myself. Um, and I want to endorse the recommendations that the Housing Commission made. Um, I would like to endorse the recommendations that Housing Leadership Council made, which is a double endorsement because the Housing Commission did that also. And, um, things that I would add to those endorsements are that, uh, we might consider using our zoning to maybe try to get more units of the SRI project. It's rather a once-in-a-generation opportunity. Um, and so I would like us to consider trying to encourage greater number of units and perhaps by increasing heights, even more open space in the same, at the same time. Um, to further, affirmatively further, I really appreciate the distribution of housing throughout the city at all levels of affordability for all abilities. Um, to that end, um, I think to sort of go on with, to add on to Kalisha's comments, our affordable housing overlay should be really aggressive. It should be more attractive than the state density bonus law, because then we can say we want to give priority for people with developmental disabilities. Um, if, for example, the state doesn't include that population in the state density bonus, I'm saying more than I actually know, but I do know that I think it's going to be to our advantage if our affordable housing overlay is more attractive than the state, because then we get to design it um, as, as opposed to the state designing it. I also think that we should increase density as, as proposed throughout the city in exchange for greater affordability using the affordable, affordable housing overlay. Um, but if we increase densities without requiring affordability, then we just increase the cost of land. In addition, I'd like to see us really aggressively implementing SB nine and SB ten to encourage to encourage a variety of types of housing throughout the city, such as duplexes and small multiplexes in all neighborhoods. And we should also implement ADU incentives to encourage people to develop ADUs, and maybe financial incentives in exchange for guaranteed low-income affordability for a number of years, as some cities like San Jose does. These are all really great ideas. There's a whole bunch of other policies that the Housing Commission recommended that I want to double endorse, but none of these will get implemented if we don't sufficiently staff our housing department. That is absolutely crucial. We should have at least three people, so that even if one person leaves, there's some hope of stability. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Nisha Sillian, followed by Adina Levin.
Hi, good evening, City Council and staff. Thank you for taking my comment. I've spoken before. So, you know, my main concern, as usual, is that friends, relatives, neighbors are getting displaced from Menlo Park due to the high cost of housing. And so I'd like to see a lot more housing get built, especially to counterbalance a lot of the large office space that's been built in the area recently. My comment on this specific report is that, you know, thank you, staff, for working on this report. It's very thorough, and I feel like a lot of things from the last couple of meetings were clarified in the report. The main issue from the last City Council meeting was the site selection and feasibility of the sites. I'm a little disappointed to not see further detail on specifically the feasibility aspect. It sounds like there was some reach out done to the property owners. I think at the Housing Commission, out of 50-plus, only like a few responded. And in the staff report for this meeting, when City Council asked about it, it sounded like there was very low response rate. So it's just very difficult to tell how likely a site are to be developed. I do think some seem somewhat suspicious. For example, the venture capitalist offices on Sand Hill, or one of the sites is on Willow Road, the headquarters of Robinhood, which just went public and is a huge company. So I doubt they're going to want to build, you know, residential housing on top of their headquarters anytime soon. So with that background, I think that we have to be aggressive in terms of putting in all the recommendations from staff and more to make sure that any sites that are indeed feasible, you know, we max out the housing as much as possible. Some of my favorite policies that I saw in the report, I think removing parking requirements or lowering them as much as possible is a no-brainer. You know, parking is expensive to build, but also, obviously, it incentivizes driving, makes it easier to drive, and contributes to climate change and a lot of, and traffic and a lot of other things. The affordable housing overlay, maximizing that, like Commissioner Grove said, it sounds great. And expanding mixed-use downtown, I think, is great. You know, downtown has a lot of retail right now, some restaurants. It would be great to have a kind of a mixed-use community there, especially on top of the parking lots. Using SB 10 is definitely seems great, cutting red tape and making things go faster. In terms of furthering fair housing, I would like to see, I know the staff report says it would only lead to maybe 100 additional units, but I'd like to see, you know, more housing just kind of sprinkled in around the different neighborhoods, because I think it contributes to a feeling of, you know, all neighborhoods, the whole city contributing to building this housing during a housing crisis. And last but not least, ministerial approval would be amazing, so we don't have to, you know, discuss every single proposal. So if City Councils want to consider that, I think that would be great. Thank you for taking my comment, and thanks for everyone's hard work on this.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Adina Levin, followed by Pam Jones.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. Adina Levin, I serve on the Complete Streets Commission. I'll be speaking for myself with the exception of something that I will point out specifically. Want to support what several of the speakers, previous speakers have said, including being happy that the vast majority of the rezoning is proposed to be outside of D1, and recommending harmonizing the densities and policies with D1. There's no reason that the area near downtown should be denser when it has more services and more transit. Speaking of the area, I'm very happy to see the parking lot proposals and the downtown area proposals. In addition, wanted to echo the comment about the SRI and USGS sites that are really distinctive opportunities as large sites. They are served by the 296 bus, which Sam Trans has coming every 15 minutes in their next scheduled redesign, and that connects to the Caltrain and to the downtown. So that seems like a place to have denser housing than what is being proposed. And also support the 20% affordable, as long as it's accompanied with enough density to make those sites feasible. Would support what I think some others have said in terms of utilizing SB nine and SB 10 to support the goal of affirmatively furthering fair housing, to have a housing in more locations across the city. And then, lastly, with a complete streets hat on, having discussed with colleagues on ad hoc subcommittee, support the idea of reducing parking for affordable housing and also near transit. The parking levels that we have are higher than what is reasonable in transit-rich and very walkable areas. And the other suggestion is to have transportation demand management policies, including for residential. There is a new organizational transit pass coming forward in the region for housing as well as employers, and we might be able to really take advantage of that to help get people to drive less. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And our next speaker will be Pam Jones, and this will also be the final call for public comment on item C1.
Good evening, Mayor Combs, Vice Mayor Nash, council members, staff, and consultants. I am a longtime resident of Bellhaven District one, and I am speaking as a person whose family moved into the mid-peninsula in 1927. As long as we do not downzone District one and upzone the rest of Menlo Park to balance housing density throughout Menlo Park, a way will be found to continue building high-density, high-rise apartments in District one. Although still in the approval processes, the Willow Village will be used as an opportunity zone to support this proposal. This is how racist land policies continue to morph and find a way not to build in the rest of Menlo Park in the opportunity zones. People are afraid of having BMRs in their neighborhood. It is not about schools, and it's not about traffic. Downzoning in District one demonstrates the intention to rectify decades of poor land policies which have led to severe discrimination. My recommendations are, one, place a moratorium on substandard ADUs and develop fully funded strategy to help homeowners bring their units up to standard. We will have a substantial number of units if we just take care of what we already have, but may not know we have, and that is some substandard ADUs. There are also requests in the planning department to build ADUs, but they have gotten held up for various reasons. My second recommendation is to increase to 20% BMR requirements and to be built at all levels of affordability that addresses meeting our numbers. We can think in terms of lease, the long-term lease of city property, say, at a dollar a year for 50 years, and maybe something like that would help as an incentive. We are creative when we have the intention to build in the rest of Menlo Park. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. It looks like our final speaker will be Mihal Bortnick.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to share a few things that I learned from my neighbors. My name is Mihal Bortnick. I learned Allied Arts, and on my blog, so it turns out the person who lived, who used to live in the house that I rent was kind of the heart of the community and organized a lot of events. And the first thing I learned is that neighbors are not that happy with that person being replaced by by an introvert like myself, and a socially awkward one in that. But somebody else did pick up the torch and start organizing events. And one of those was just around the time where the new house got built that went on the market for $7 million and sold within a week. And every single person that got together was just feeling like they were getting, they're just going to afford that house. And it just occurred to me that, you know, the word gentrification seems like the wrong word to use. But if homeowners in Allied Arts are feeling priced out of their neighborhood, that something is really not working with our housing policy. And the thing that showed up for me is that house is actually two lots down from a building that's, that has the exact same profile from the street. You couldn't tell, tell the difference between those two. But that lot houses 10, 10 units, houses 10 families. And two lots over, it's not legal to house 10 families. And so we're building, you know, I'm not sure you can call it a house. It's a mansion or a compound. And that is not what the neighbors are actually looking for. And so something like SB 10 seems like a really good solution for that kind of situation where it would be nice to just make it legal to build housing that families can afford and that my neighbors can afford. Thank you for the consideration. So SB 10 would be great to add to the plan. Have a good night.
Thank you for your comment. And seeing no further hands raised, Mayor Combs, you may continue.
Thank you, City Clerk Karen, and thank you to everyone who provided a public comment. So bringing it back to the dais, I'm open as to how my colleagues would like to structure this if there is a sense that you have, you know, clarifying questions, and then we can all sort of work through those clarifying questions. And then, and then we'll do a cycle of clarifying questions, and then come back and do do comments direction, Councilmember Mueller.
I just wanted to just make sure I understand and clarify that we, Councilmember Taylor does have an 8:00 AM time tonight, and I wanted to, that's what I was told. I'd like to make sure that, to check that with her, so we all know if that's the case to be judicious.
This is Councilmember Taylor. Can you repeat that? I didn't hear what was just stated.
Yeah, Councilmember Taylor, I was told that we started the meeting at 5:00 tonight, because you had a, you had a hard stop at 8:00, 8:00 PM. I just wanted to double-check that was the case, so that we would know to be judicious with our time.
It's just 6:00.
No, I understand it's just 6:00, but this is, I imagine it'll be, you know, I just wanted to confirm at the start of the meeting and let people know when the meeting would be ending.
Oh, okay. It would have been nice to check with me at the beginning of the meeting. At this time, time is not a factor.
Okay, I just was informed that by staff. That's why I'm asking. So, thank you.
Thanks. I still think we can take the idea of being judicious to heart. Okay, so I'm gonna cycle through and give each member of council an opportunity to ask clarifying questions. Is there someone who wants to go first? Vice Mayor Nash.
So I'd just like to ask one question first, and then I may have other questions later, if that's okay for other people. But my question is, what we're actually trying to accomplish tonight? Obviously, we're trying to get to the NOP, but the list of sites, for example, I am aware of many sites that I would like to see on the list as far as additional opportunity sites for housing. For example, along El Camino and just Santa Cruz Avenue. There's many buildings there that presumably are ripe for, well, probably, tear down and building new ones. How do we, should that sort of development be on the table? How does that get accomplished? When, what's appropriate for this? Because certainly, we can look at what's on the table right now and make comments on that, but is, what about these other opportunities? And then, if they're not part of this, at what point are they appropriate?
If I may, through the mayor, Jeff Bradley with M Group, Planning Consultant, working on behalf of the city on the housing element. Now, now would be a better time to add sites than after the project description is written up and used as a basis to starting the environmental impact report process. So, yes, it would be, it would be appropriate to either direct staff to add sites or remove sites at this time.
And then, right now, we're looking at, depending where you look in the report, well, essentially around 4,000 sites.
Units.
Units. Thank you. Units, yes. Good point. At the end of the EIR, do we have some ability to take, to move around the sites? Or I guess I'm just wondering, how do we approach this? Because it still seems like we've had very little community input, although not just disregarding what's been done, but I'm trying to get a handle on what we are deciding tonight and how, how permanent that is. Are we, the decisions that we're making or that we're discussing really will have a significant impact on the city, and it still seems while we can certainly discuss them, it seems like if we are truly just, this is a point of no return, that's a different discussion than if this is just, we're going into the EIR, there will be plenty of chances to change it, and what is the process?
Generally speaking, as we go forward, it'll, it'll be like a funnel. We've started with casting a fairly large net and asking you to authorize us to study 4,000 units in order to, in order to meet our hard goal, which is really 1,500 affordable units. And then, over time, we have the ability to narrow down to some extent, still keeping in mind our concerns about, you know, achieving our affordable housing goals, requirements. So as we go forward, and we prepare the NOP, we prepare the project description, we publish an EIR, it will be fairly easy to reduce sites, because we're asking to study this fairly broad umbrella of sites that we've identified, including some zoning district-wide rezonings that would affect larger areas. So as we go forward, it's, it's fairly simple to go down into that funnel and start to pare down a little bit and funnel down into what we feel is really the best feasible sites, getting additional feedback from property owners, you know, are they in, are they out? Taking that into careful consideration. But as part of that funneling process, it'll be more difficult to say, hey, I want to add this site over here, because we've, we'll have already sort of started the process. We have started technical studies around traffic and noise and air quality that is really based on the geographic location of these different sites. And so that, that would be, that would, that would become a schedule problem for the overall project. And that's why I say it'd be better to add a site tonight than a month or two from now, when we're going down the environmental review route, we're firing up the fiscal analysis, looking at the When we're, we're going down the environmental review route, we're firing up the fiscal analysis, looking at the fiscal impacts of this based on that, on that, that basket of sites we have.
Through the mayor, if I may just add, add to that. So just, just to further clarify for the specific planned sites, so things that are in the El Camino downtown specific plan. So there was the bucket of the 3,700 units potentially from the 51 sites that we identified. Another item that we are looking at is, is the zoning for at least a minimum base density of 30 dwellings a acre. So that would take effect for all sites, regardless if you are identified specifically on this list. All properties within the specific plan would be able to take advantage of that. Doesn't mean you can't, just because they're not on this list doesn't mean you don't have a development potential or you don't, you can't develop in that, in that time period. These are ones that we identify that look feasible to be developed within this planning period. But certainly everything in the specific plan would be able to take advantage of that, that, that zoning change.
Thank you. That's really helpful. And then, so if a, if a site is currently office or commercial, it needs to be residential mixed use to take advantage of the the housing.
Right. So beyond the specific plan, which was, I believe most of the sites do allow for mixed use. So there are some sites that are on our list here that do not currently allow for residential. So we will need to find a mechanism, whether that's through an overlay or rezoning or modifications to an existing zoning district that would allow for a residential use.
And at what point will that be done?
We're hoping to do it concurrently. That would be the, the plan so that we would do the rezoning concurrent with the adoption of the general plan, excuse me, the housing element.
And is there any thought, well, actually I know that there is because it was in the report, just as how to put, how to encourage residential as opposed to commercial, except to where it is for services that are required by the residents.
Thank you. And that, and that is some of the input that we're looking for from the city council this evening. So we, we understand that retail, commercial, the neighborhood serving uses are critical to maintaining, to be maintained at the site. So that would be a mixed use opportunity, a more traditional mixed use with retail and personal services and whatnot. Then there's some sites here that are more office focused. And so the feedback from the council this evening of, you know, is it, is residential an add-on and maintain the existing levels of office? Is it a reduction in office? Is it a, you know, a complete? Once you redevelop, so like, say, for example, a most recent example in the RMU zoning district out in the Bayfront area, once you redevelop, you can maintain your existing use today. No, no, no changes are necessary, but once you redevelop, residential is a requirement of that zoning district. So there's different ways that we can structure the zoning. So whether it's a must-have residential as, as a redevelopment or it, it could be office without residential. So there's different ways and that's, that's some of the feedback that we're looking from the city council this evening.
And are we doing this just generally or how specific should we be looking at this?
I, I think if you can provide specific is, is helpful, general, it might be areas, it might be specific zoning districts themselves. So I think there's different ways to look at it. So you know, if there's sort of a high level guidance at the city council and then staff can evaluate what makes sense as we move through this process and bring it back to the city council for consideration.
And maybe I missed it, but I don't believe I saw anything about the heights. How is that getting factored in? When do we have any discussion about that?
Sure. And that is part of the broad general development standards, I think that we've identified as we recognize that with density changes, there's probably going to be changes to height limitations, potentially FAR, or maybe we talked about aligning, better aligning FAR with density. So you don't max out on your FAR and have a very low density. So kind of pairing those two together. So we're getting units that match the densities, parking ratios. So that's sort of the bucket of development standards that our team would be looking at as part of this process.
And when does that come before council?
We, we could do a check-in, but the hope would be to do it concurrently with the, the housing element as a program, if you will.
But does that mean we're making decisions tonight?
We're not, I don't believe we're making decisions tonight, but there's feedback that would help inform those potential changes. That would be, that would be helpful.
I guess what's making me uncomfortable is it seems like we are really making decisions tonight or being asked to make decisions tonight for the future of Menlo Park. And what it will look like. And it seems that I that is a big step at this point with the number, you know, without having more community outreach, more time to really discuss this with the residents. And so I'm trying to see what is the, how narrow can we get at this point where we still have more input from the community? When I looked at the schedule, I didn't, I saw meetings with commissions and all. I did not see any meetings with the community. And this is the future of Menlo Park and the residents need to be part of this. As I'm sure you know, it's just, I mean, I've realized there's timelines, but these
Yeah, no, I understand and certainly community engagement and outreach is something very much part of this process. And so what, it may not be completely defined. I know we're still looking for the conversation around the CEOC and engagement. But in terms of for this evening, it's sort of what is the, the upper umbrella? You know, what is, what is that we want to study? There's no decisions being made tonight, but it is, what is it that we want to, I don't want to use the worst, you know, worst case scenario, but that, that is the umbrella that we're going to be working from. So as Jeff mentioned, here's the big, you know, the kind of the umbrella, and then we're going to be kind of working our way through of refining the sites, maybe identifying like, okay, you know, what, what the appropriate densities are going to be, what the appropriate heights are going to be. And some of the things, there may be items that don't affect the, the EIR. And then some of the things like certainly the units are going to be something that we need to have guidance on so that we can study that in the EIR that, that is, that's the key component of that.
Thank you. I'll see what others want to ask.
Councilmember Mueller.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank staff for their work and, and I think there was a lot of, and for the work that's gone into this. You know, at the end of the day, the housing element comes down to feasibility of sites. Like it's, I remember from the last oh geez, so all the, all the ones we've done before, it always just comes down to feasibility of sites. And you can't, at the end of the day, you can find them or you can't. And if you have them, that's where it has to go. It seems like in the current conditions coming down from HCD, that's even more the case than it used to be. So I also think that, I can't remember how, you know, it's housing, housing elements are uncomfortable. Just uncomfortable to make a decision when you're talking about that many units, but you just have to do it because you have to comply. And it's an exciting chance for renewal and you're just afraid, you're just hoping you're not going to screw up what's good about your city while you're doing it. So and that you're going to improve your city while you're doing it because there's that great opportunity to do so. So I, I actually, I don't have a lot. I think we're, I mean, it sounds like we're up against the timeline tonight. We have to provide you direction tonight to move this forward in order as to get the EIR out. I respect staff's work on it. The question that I have, when I went through the report is that it really comes down to the thing that I think is coming down to, to me is like the question to be answered tonight is whether or not it's 15% inclusionary or 20% inclusionary and whether or not that has a, a major impact on actually site, on, on whether or not we get projects built. And so I really would love to hear from you all on whether or not, on what you believe on that between 15 to 20% ratio. And then beyond that, I'm just ready to have you go to work. So, but I really would love to hear some analysis on whether we should be doing 15 to 15% versus 20%.
Thank you, Councilmember Mueller. A BAE did a, a report for the, for the city on this topic just last year, I believe. As a plant, as a practicing planner in the region, I tend to look around and see several jurisdictions nearby at that 20% level that share a similar real estate market as Menlo Park. Namely Palo Alto, Seminole County itself. As well as one or two others that I can't think of at the moment. And I know market rate developers are, are very leery or outright opposed to increases in BMR requirements or, or BMR requirements just fundamentally. But there is some good analysis out there that shows that the BMR requirement is not a tax on the homeowners buying and buying into those new developments. The real estate prices are set by the market and by, by the purchasing power of the, of the future homeowners. And new homes are competing against a much larger stock of existing homes, which are not subject to BMR requirements. Or if they were, it was long ago in the past. And so prices, even though in our area, they seem to always be going up. Prices are, are not determined by individual development projects, is determined by the market overall. So if anything, the, the increased cost to, to the developer has obviously, it does represent a a reduction in revenue from, from a project level perspective is, is really a, a decrease in, in profit. And so, but the key thing is we can show, I believe, through a careful fiscal analysis that it would not make market rate projects infeasible.
Okay. And thank you for answering that question. My question, if we say 20% tonight and we later decide 15%, is that going to materially affect the EIR? Do we need to set that number tonight?
The, the EIR is, 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 is a bit agnostic on financial and social issues. I would go so far as to say the EIR will probably not even evaluate the, that issue of the 15 versus 20%. It's really, there is some implication for the, for the traffic analysis. So maybe I'll, I'll hedge that a little bit. But generally, affordable units have a slightly lower traffic generation rate. So that could, that could work its way into its, into the EIR. But other than, other than indirect effects like that, the actual policy on that issue will not disturb the EIR one way or the other.
Right. So we don't need to, it doesn't affect the number of units that's going to be studied within the EIR?
If I may add just a little bit, so I, I think, yeah, so the, the units are, are units in the EIR, but one thing that we did highlight, our recommendation includes setting at the 15% BMR our current rate, but we are seeking information back from the city council on whether or not to look explored for the 20%. So if there was an interest in sort of saying, tonight's the night, we're going to, you know, commit to 20%, you could potentially lower the number of units to be studied. And there's a bar chart here in the staff report that sort of identifies the, you know, what are the market rate units at 15% and 20% to capture the remaining 390 affordable housing units? So potentially that might weigh in on how many, what's that sort of upper limit that we want to study? But right now, what the recommendation is to study at 15%. And, and then we can get guidance from the city council if, as part of this process to look at what 20% might. If we want to enable a 20% inclusionary zoning requirement.
Is it okay to, that tonight for us not to choose and say, just look at both? We can make that decision later.
Right. So I, I think the guidance would be explore 20% and then it's not necessarily choosing, it's, it's a guidance to explore it and staff would do that.
Okay. And then the other question just before, because the only other thing I had was that mid pen had written, written in and said that there were two sites that they are currently looking at proposing for affordable housing that were not included in the staff report. As feasibility sites and are, are those now being added or how is that being dealt with?
Yes, thank you for that. Those were the two sites that Asher mentioned that we included in the narrative portion of the staff report and in the tables. But we omitted them inadvertently from the, from the maps.
Okay.
And so they're, they're definitely in the inventory itself. And we will, going forward, we'll be, be sure to add them to the, to the map. So everyone can see that they're, that they're there.
Oh, then to my colleagues, I'm comfortable moving forward at this time with the study. So.
Councilmember Wolus.
First off, I, I really want to thank the staff, Deanna and Justin and Sarla and Jeff and everyone at M Group for really listening to us, both at the council meeting and the questions that we submitted. I was really pleasantly, I don't want to say surprised, but I was very happy looking at the analysis and your ability to interpret what it was we were getting at and to pivot and be open to a different way of looking at things. So I just wanted to acknowledge that. I also want to just make sure that especially for the public who've been following along, at our last meeting, we were talking about choosing between A, B, C, and D. Kind of these different site strategies. That's no longer the question in front of us anymore. Now we're looking at kind of a target EIR number. And then as the journey continues, the site selection will narrow and sites will reveal themselves to be more or less feasible and whatnot. So that's just my first kind of confirmation also to help the public follow along with what we're doing. So did I get that right?
Yes.
Okay.
I would like to think some of the optional concepts are still encompassed within the, the total universe of what you're looking at.
Yeah, it wasn't a wasted exercise by any means, but
Thank you. I needed to hear that.
Yeah. We've kind of shifted how we're looking at this. My next question is for the mayor. Kind of at the end of this discussion, how are you going to walk us through the direction that you're seeking? So I have a sense of how I need to organize my questions and thoughts.
Good question. So two heads up, at some point, we will take a five minute sort of break. And I may, I may reopen a public comment. So just to, because there have been some, some people who joined and it may, may make sense to reopen, to give people that opportunity. Specifically since we don't have the hard stop at eight, although again, back to it, it's important to be, to be judicious. So I was just after the sort of people asked their clarifying questions was going to go to the staff report and there is the section on sort of recommendations. And, and we're, we talk about sort of the rezoning of approximately 3,700 housing units, the upzoning of El Camino Real, modifications to global housing overlay and removal of the 10,000 square foot minimum lot size. Go for there. It seems as, and then, and then the, the sort of where they wanted feet. And so that's where my understanding, the staff wants a clear direction of going forward. And then where they want some feedback on was one of the issues we already brought up, which is increasing from 15 to 20%. The, the, the below market rate requirement and, and the modifications to retail commercials on the district to allow residential uses. And so my idea was to walk us through all of those items to see where there was where there was support from a majority of the council.
So is the intention now we ask for clarifying questions, then we'll take a break or take public comment. Then we'll kind of just discuss in general our thoughts and then we'll go through each of those items one by one. Or going through those items one by one is discussing our thoughts.
Yeah. So I would say that like, if there is some, you ask your clarifying questions and if there is this holistic overview you want to provide, then I think you would provide, provide it after the clarifying question. Now, if you think that, you know, sort of you need time after those questions answered, then I have no problem sort of saying, hey, let's take a break and then we come back and, and if people want to sort of give like holistic thoughts, then that's fine. Yeah, I have no you know, no position to that. Do at some point, I'm fine with whatever approach.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I have some questions. The downtown specific cap right now, so we're talking about raising it or we're talking about not having a cap at all? And what are the implications of each of those?
Right. So it might be a tag team here, but it would be a removal of Right, so it might be a tag team here, but it would be a removal of the cap of 680 units. And I believe with other state laws, having a cap on housing is something that we can't enforce, and so it would be a removal.
Okay, thank you. And then are we going to be going through the the policies that the Housing Commission was looking at? Like those specific policies about sliding scales and just the eight things or whatever that was? Are you looking for feedback on those?
We're happy to take feedback. Those were, those items were not necessarily items that affect the EIR. And so those weren't the focus of today's conversation. But they were to help understand what are some of the tools? I think we were talking about the tools in the toolbox, like that kind of helped get the right, the right types of units that we want, the right densities. And so those were the conversations that we were having at the Housing Commission. We're happy to hear, you know, if there if there are strategies that you really thumbs up, thumbs down, but some of those do not affect the ER itself. And so weren't necessarily part of this conversation this evening.
So maybe to Vice Mayor Nash's point, if we don't discuss those tonight, will those be coming back to us at some point for our thoughts or those will just come at the very like last minute?
I'm I'm operating under the assumption that we'll come back to the city council before we we release the public review draft of the housing element, which another new requirement. We have to do that for 30 days before we send it to State Department of Housing and Community Development, known as HCD. And they now have 90 days to review it instead of the 60, the previous 60 days. But regardless of all that, we do think it's important that the council see it before we put it out for public review and before we send it to Sacramento.
I 100% agree with that. And then will we have, well, I would request that it comes to us in a way that if we do have the back, that we're, it's able to be incorporated. And it's not like we have to approve it tonight to meet some schedule, which I mean, we could try to do, but so that we have a chance to wait on it.
Definitely. And if I may, Councilmember Wilson, I wanted to acknowledge the Housing Commission's role in all this. And they did give us, like you said, the policy feedback and those parts that was sort of like negative feedback, like you know, sliding density scale is too complicated, average unit size maxims is too complicated, make it simpler. That is reflected in the in the staff report where we originally, we were kind of stuck on the idea of, you know, percentage increases under the density bonus program, because that's how traditionally you think of density bonuses. And that's why we were kind of generating some of that complexity in order to get affordable housing up into those higher numbers. And then the simple simpler approach was just if a project's 100% affordable, it's it is entitled to that 100 dwelling units breaker without having to have some complicated math to build up a adequate density bonus percentage. So I just wanted to acknowledge that even though you know, it looks like that 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 really helps. And in combination with discussions with the housing, affordable housing developers, providers, that really helped inform what what you see in front of you now.
Okay, wonderful. I wanted to reference a letter that the Sierra Club had submitted. I'm talking a lot about the jobs housing balance. And they were talking about or requesting that a jobs housing fit goal be included so that there's some kind of linkage with commercial, with our office. Lots of office development that we have. Can you, how did you read that? And is there any way to put some? Was there anything we can do about that to somehow link kind of the office development we have with housing development?
Sure, to some extent, a lot of that, a lot of that linkage is done at the regional level where ABAG and MTC look at all the jurisdictions and their population and their jobs that they're creating and the jobs they have. And then, you know, we receive our housing allocations, right? You know, we used to call those the fair share housing allocation, which is a little more intuitive than than RENA, the term. And so I would hate to create like a totally separate system for tracking that unless the city felt like that was something they wanted to do. To me, it's more useful to think of it in terms of the discussion previously tonight about, you know, how do we think of redevelopment of a retail site? Well, we want to keep the great bulk of the retail activity, because it's it's so useful to the community. But we also want to add housing to it. But that same discussion around office space, because of this this concern about too many jobs, not enough housing. Maybe in that case, in that situation, the city is more inclined to say we'd rather see all the office space go away, because we have too much of it. And we and replaced with housing, because we don't have enough. And so I I see it kind of having practical implications like that. I haven't really gotten my head around like a local, a local version of of a jobs housing balance, but it's definitely within the within the purview of a general plan, you know, to have a policy like that. And just figuring out what that what that balance would be.
Yeah, I would be curious in your spare time if there was some like exploration of that, because I know it's something I've heard from residents even before I was on council. And I don't think the goal, at least my goal, isn't to, you know, drive out all office because for the Silicon Valley and that's the engine of our economy. But I think that we have to be good stewards and responsible in our growth and do it in a in a way that we can keep up with it. So I I had a few other like mid, like little detailed questions, but I'm not going to go there, because I'm going to try to keep it high level to Drew's lucky day. But I just want to say, kind of, I'll do my little overall spiel right now. But like I said, I'm really pleased, I think for community members who are tuning in for the first time or following along, the the numbers are big here. I mean, we're looking at big numbers. These are the kind of maximum potential numbers, so it doesn't mean these are all going to be built out. But so I want to make that clear. And I also want to make clear that, yes, this is kind of a bureaucratic state exercise in fulfilling a requirement. But this is also our opportunity to meet the needs of our community. And when you look at kind of the percentages of rent burdened residents in Menlo Park and people who are extremely rent burdened, those are people paying anywhere from 30% of their income on rent or 50% of the income on rent. I think it's like 30% of our city is somewhat rent burdened. So creating opportunities to add affordable housing so that all kinds of people who we rely on and who are part of our families and who are part of the fabric of our community can live here and not commute and create horrible things for the climate and have horrible commutes to their homes is is a really important thing. So it's going to be hard for us to even even though we're not going to hit this giant number that we're seeing, that's just, like I said, the the zoning number. But it is going to be a big number and it's going to be an evolution in our community. But I think the important thing is to figure out how we can take advantage of this opportunity to really add things that we want, like be able to have more retail, be able to have enough people in our city to work in our restaurants, to visit our restaurants, to have teachers be able to live here. So I see this as kind of scary, but a little exciting. And I just hope that folks will come along with us and give us feedback and be open minded as we as we go through this. So I understand that as we go to these higher zoning levels, I would like to see for the community some kind of renderings to show what 100 units an acre looks like. I think for those of us who are kind of on the inside baseball game, we kind of know what we're talking about, or for those who've spent time looking at the developments in the Bell Haven neighborhood or in the Bayside, we know what we're talking about. But if I'm just an average Menlo Park resident who's putting my kids to bed, 100 units an acre doesn't mean anything to me. And so I think we need to start communicating to residents the scale of what we're talking about and preparing people for for what's coming. And I do think, even though we're not looking at A, B, C, and D, that as we look at kind of all the variables of where to add this housing, we're obviously looking at transit oriented development, access to good services. And I think the school district distribution is a really important one. So it's not all impacting or almost all impacting Menlo Park City School District. So I know as we go further down, we're going to refine those sites. But I think we're going to have to like juggle a lot of a lot of factors as we as we go. And I do think that in order to make, take this from a kind of bureaucratic zoning exercise to actually being able to produce the affordable housing, we're going to need to utilize those tools in the toolbox that the Housing Commission weighed in on, which is reducing those parking requirements, making sure that the affordable housing overlay is really robust, that the delta between that affordable housing overlay and the base density is quite big so that we get that affordable housing. All of those levers. And and increasing the inclusionary amount also, I'm in support of that to 20%. And I think it will work if we have the right densities and the right parking requirements and the right incentives to make it happen. So I think it's absolutely possible. It's what we kind of trade off in order to get that. So all in all, I I I get the 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 weight of this project. But I think it's the right thing to do. And I look forward to hearing what my colleagues have to say. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilson. We'll go to Councilmember Taylor now.
Thank you, Mayor Combs, and and thank you to the project team for the the staff report and following up with the questions from council. I want to start off with a comment, I believe, that was made earlier by one of the public commenters regarding increasing the commercial linkage fee. Is this something that will be studied in the NOP? Or would you need directions specifically from council to do that?
Thank you, Councilmember Taylor. This is Jeff Riley. I believe the project team has envisioned that as a program within the housing element to give the city time to evaluate that. That typically involves a nexus study as well as a feasibility study to really find that right balance point between additional funds for affordable housing and judging the the effect on on the development of non residential space. And so that would give, that would, it wouldn't be something that would be effective upon typically, it wouldn't be something that would be effective upon adoption of the housing element, like some of the rezonings we talked about earlier. But it'd be a work item within the housing element to pursue this idea and evaluate it. And and it would have its own, you know, public outreach program, its own decision making path. You know, ultimately with the council, of course, deciding, you know, what to do. So it'd be it'd be a policy and a program within the housing element to implement later or evaluate and or implement. I hope Deanna agrees with me on that. That's how I've envisioned it. That's typically how it's handled, that type of that type of item.
Thank you. My next question is, and this is pertaining to some questions that I asked previously. And that is about counting the projects that have already been submitted as a part of RENA 5 and not RENA 6. And I didn't the, if you could explain that to me again, because it wasn't clear as to why why that wouldn't be a good idea or why it is. I'm interested in doing it, so I just wanted to make sure that my input was addressed as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Taylor. So adding the pipeline projects is something we can, we can, we can move those. We, as we've included them sort of in the kind of the the first chunk to get the net new numbers. But if it's something that the council feels more comfortable removing that, then we could look at, then it would, it would change the numbers of of housing that would need to be potentially studied. And so that that would be helpful if if there's a sort of the calculation, if we would not to look at it a little bit differently. We can, we can certainly look at that, but the 1490 that we're presenting you this evening does include all of the pending projects. So there's a chart from the October 26 staff report that identifies projects that have been approved, that are pending, that are under construction, and in which cycle those might be included in. What the 1490 represents are all of the pending projects. And in sort of that, that that first number to get the the net 1490. So it'll be the different buckets of units by income category. And as demonstrated in the the chart, we have met our market rate development. And so we are looking at producing units in the three lower income categories.
So in order to count the, to count the projects in District 1 as a part of RENA 5, you, it would be direction from the council.
So I guess typically in RENA 5, the way that the city produced, shows on our annual progress report every April, it would be based upon issuance of a building permit. And that's what is counted towards RENA 5 is how we've reported to HCD.
Thank you. I have a couple more questions, and that is going to the opportunity sites. I would like to see SRI, the USGS. And then also there are a few sites over near, it's it's in District 2, but it's near Marsh Road. So around the Bohannon Post Office. Would like to see if it's possible to add sites there that are there. It's near transportation, it's near shopping, there's a grocery store in that area. So I'd like to see those added as opportunity sites.
So just for clarification, if I may, Councilmember Taylor, so USGS is currently on the sites list, is identified as I have my street, I believe it's 12 year, if I'm looking at it correctly. And then SRI, because it has a pending project, that is under the pipeline scenario. And then if if there is direction from the council to further explore, which are office uses, if I'm understanding correctly, the site's over off of Marsh Road and Bohannon. Those are, I believe, oh, office, non bonus level zoning currently.
If we put those parcels or that area on as a list of an opportunity site, doesn't that mean we can rezone it for housing?
Yes, so if if it's something that we would like to study, I I think we would probably want to look further to see if it would meet HCD's criteria for something that could be potentially developed in the next planning, during this planning period. But it it would be something that would be potentially rezoned for housing and or mixed use.
Yes, I'm I'm definitely interested in that. And I bring up the USGS site because I think only a portion of it was listed. So I don't think it was the entire property.
Yes.
Or maybe I'm mistaken.
Yeah, no, you're correct. So there was only a portion and then a carve out portion. So we recognize that it is sort of an unknown entity right now, as it's going through, you know, potential sale. So I think one of the strategies that we were thinking of is maybe this is the initial, like, we want to signal that there's going to be some housing on this site. But as the site is sold and a potential new property owner comes forward, there may be additional rezoning opportunities as part of a future project. So it doesn't preclude a future project. So it doesn't preclude, um, future development, but if the city council would like to identify more acreage, we can, we can, um, add that here as well.
I'm interested in more acreage.
Since really, excuse me, Councilmember Taylor, do you mind if I, um, chime in for a minute?
Yes. No, I don't mind.
Thanks. Um, so in the document, it says that, um, market rate development would be 60 units on the entire USGS site and 200 market rate affordable units. If the idea is to, in fact, to, um, do the most that we think we might see and then be able to come down from it, it seems like those, um, we should be studying something much larger than that. And I guess it's, this is the opportunity to really signal that this is a wonderful site for housing. And so I would agree with Councilmember Taylor that we should be really pushing the limit on this one. Thank you.
I have one last question, um, before we go to break. Um, and that is, and this is something that I have brought, um, to council and also talked to staff about, um, over the past few years. And that is downzoning District One while we upzone the rest of the districts. The reply that I was given by staff is that it's up to H, HCD. Uh, just wanted to find out, and I'm not sure if this is a legal question or not, um, but what is, what is the process? My understanding is that we can do it. It feels like that it doesn't want to be done. And so I'm going to keep pushing on District One being downzoned. So I want to know how that can happen in this process.
I'm happy to respond to that question, Councilmember Taylor, near Doherty. There is a process in the Housing Crisis Act that allows the reduction in housing intensity um, on particular sites in the city with an equitable increase in housing intensity potential elsewhere in the city. Um, and after the city, uh, rezones or, or as a, as a condition of rezoning the property, um, HCD approval is required under the Housing Crisis Act. You are correct about that process. And, and if you wanted more specific on how it would work, the, there are a number of alternatives that we could pursue to do that rezoning. Um, it could be part of the city's housing element. It could be part of the city's land use element. It would require revisions to the city's zoning code and of course would require an environmental analysis.
As, as far as, thank you so much, um, for your response. And as far as the process to do that, is, is that something to look at during the housing element process? Or is that something to do independently?
Sorry, I was muted. Um, I would turn to my planner colleagues for their preferences on that, but from a legal standpoint, um, we're not required to do it as part of the housing element. It would require revisions to the city's general plan. Um, and so we either need to, um, initiate those revisions and changes as a part of the housing element. But, um, doing that as a part of the, the land, the, um, land use element is also an, an option.
If I could chime in, I, I think before we get into the complexities of what the process would look like, I mean, the first step is that there, it has to be clear that there is an interest of a majority of council to go in that direction. And so, which has not happened at this point. And so my question then to the city attorney would be like, as I'm going down the list of things that I want to get, um, clear on where the majority of council stands, can I add that as one? And very specifically say, where is council at on downzoning, uh, District One? Uh, and obviously us all knowing what the additional ramifications of that, that would be, that there would need to be a commensurate, um, upzoning someplace else in the city. Uh, is, are we appropriately sort of noticed, uh, to do something like that? Because I, I think before we get into the complexities, it, it seems like a very complex and involved process. But, but the, the, the blocker is not that, the blocker is, and it's not staff. Um, the blocker is that there hasn't been expressed a direction from a majority of council at this, this moment.
Yeah, I, yes, you're, we can, you can certainly take the temperature and, and assess the appetite of the council to pursue that option. There, of course, is no vote on, on implementing, um, that downzoning and upzoning. There's a, a number of considerations that, um, we, staff and my office and, um, the M group would, would analyze before we even bring back like a clearer path on, how we would structure that sort of, um, those zoning changes.
And so I'll just, in Councilmember Taylor, if that's something you would like, I, I'm certainly willing to, to do that. And so, so that we can give, um, so at that point, then, then staff and the city attorney would all have the clarity that, that if there is the desire to move in that direction, that the desire has come, um, from a sort of a check-in uh, from, uh, from, from the council and, and a majority has expressed a desire to continue, our majority has, in that, that vein, or on that path, our majority, um, has, has not expressed, uh, a desire. And then, and then we can sort of, to some degree, r- resolve that, that issue.
Thank you, Mayor Combs, and yes, please.
Councilmember Woolworth.
Um, building off, off that, do you, I'm asking staff, do you have a sense of the order of magnitude of what that would mean? Cause I don't even know what my, how to even think about weighing in on that without knowing what we're even talking about here.
Thank you, um, for the question. So I think, um, sort of in, sort of like magnitude, looking, I think, existing RMU parcels, just for comparison. There's 31 parcels that were zoned RMU. I believe 22 of those parcels have been, uh, either approved for development or have current pending projects. So remaining nine parcels, approximately, uh, 13 acres remaining. Um, so if we're looking at kind of the, the base and the max bonus at 100 dwellings to the acre, looking at a base level, 383 units and 1,275 at the high end.
Can you repeat that clearly, please?
Sure. So the, at the base level for the remaining nine units, and there may be some more, um, review that we need to do, but just on the nine parcels, um, with about 12.75 acres remaining, 383 units at the base level and approximately 1275, then at 100 dwellings to the acre.
And does that get broken down by affordability level?
No, 15% would be, um, if they were built, 15% would be, uh, affordable per our inclusionary zoning requirement, but not by specific, um, income categories.
So, but given that we have a lot of market rates, is it okay if I continue on this path for a moment? Um, given that we have so much market rate development going on in the Bayfront, does it actually add a substantive amount to Districts two through five to, to downzone for the housing? Or is it not about the housing element? It's about, do you understand what I'm asking? Looks like Betsy understands what I'm asking. Maybe she can ask it in a more clear way. Or if you understand, go for it.
Maybe Jeff, Jeff's nodding his head that he's.
In half sentences and some people are nodding and so.
So, so Deanna identified, uh, I'm going to call it 1,300 units at the, at the high end. Uh, under the bonus zoning that goes up to 100 units per acre. Um, and so if we, if we think of, if we think of downzoning that to say, uh, 50 units per acre, just to throw a number out there, then the, the upzone required would be half of that 1,300. Cause you'd already, you'd be already be allowing half of it where it is now. And then you'd need to upzone somewhere else to pick up that 650 units. So in my mind, that's kind of the order of magnitude numbers we're talking about, unless, unless we're talking about downzoning, um, you know, to some other number. But, but to me, that's how the math would work. And, and given that, given the order of magnitude, what's happening, uh, in the remainder of the city through the housing element that we presented to you tonight, the only, the only real question is, is that, is that happening in isolation to satisfy the Housing Accountability Act, like the city attorney talked about? Or is it additive also on top of, because we're already, we're already upzoning more than, more than that. That's through what, or we're recommending that, you're considering it. Is it, is it, can it simply be packaged into what is already happening and, or is potentially happening within the housing element? Or is it additive onto that? I believe the conservative take on it, because this hasn't really been probed and tested legally, I don't believe, is to just assume that it's on top of what the housing element requires in its own right. Which again is that lower number, that 1,500 rounded off number of affordable is the real target.
So if the 1,500 is our real HCD number, but we're planning on studying 4,000, I mean, it sounds like it could potentially absorb that, that amount. Is that correct?
Yes.
Or this, we're obviously would require additional analysis and whatnot.
Big, looking at it from, from a big high altitude, it seems like, it seems like the math would work.
And then my other question is, um, so we're looking at adding the, so if we were at 100 acres in the M2 and, um, within the housing element, we're talking at going 100 acres with our affordable housing overlay. Does that satisfy, because it's not like apples to apples. One is like a bonus market rate thing in the M2 and one is affordable housing overlay in the rest of the city. Does that satisfy the, the need to, in the upzoning to, to mitigate the downzoning?
That's a good question. I don't know the answer.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, we'll take a, um, five. Did you have some, please, please?
I'm just wondering, so I have some more questions, but I think they're not really clarifying questions. They're more, um, direction. So is that something we should do after break?
Y- yes, probably hoping though that the, then you will be able to organize them as they've been organized, uh, in the staff report. Like your sort of direction questions. Because my, my goal is.
Can I go ahead with this now? So in looking, actually, first of all, um, I mentioned this to the city manager as we walked in. Um, but this was a fabulous staff report and it just, as everybody has said, it really, you did a fabulous job addressing the questions that were in front of us. I still do have questions. And that is, um, so essentially, I've been waiting for two years. Some of us have been waiting for two years is not for an opportunity to rezone for more housing. And so what I'm trying to do is, um, just use this as an opportunity. And I'm trying to figure out how much of this should be going into the EIR, the housing element, how much needs to wait for a future housing element? Cause we don't want to put everything in now. But it seems like it would be a shame to have, um, it would be a shame to, um, have some of the multifamily housing that's around town that, um, it may be, rebuilt, to be rebuilt to the old, to our current standards as opposed to what may be possible in this sort of re-envisioning and to provide more housing. For example, there's a large group, there, I believe they're currently zoned R3. And this is between Middle Avenue and downtown. And there's a lot of housing there that, um, looks like it may be ripe for renovating at some point in the nearer future. Um, but, so currently, I believe it's two-story. Is it possible to increase it to three-story or even four-story? Is now the time? How do we go about doing that?
Thank you, Councilwoman Nash, or Vice Mayor Nash, excuse me. So, uh, that is one of the recommendations from staff for the R3 around downtown. So, um, as part of the Rena three, four cycle, we added, um, an increased, a density bump. So an increase to 30 dwellings to the acre for our three properties that were, uh, that met the minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet. As part of this housing element, we're looking to remove that. And so I think that addresses your question about being able to increase the density. So regardless of the size of the lot, be able to increase it to the 30 dwelling units.
And what does that mean about height?
Right. So we would then, uh, there is already an established height as part of, uh, the existing R3 zoning district. I'd have to look it up to, um, remember, but it might be like 40 feet or so. Um, but I can, I can look it up and, and provide that, that exact number if you'd like.
Okay. And this is where I think that it might be worthwhile getting the community involved and at some point, because I think it does have a, a large impact on what the look in the field of the, of the neighborhood is. Um, but I, I think that, um, even, gosh, two and a half years ago, when I was, um, campaigning, there was an appetite to increase the height there and to get more, more housing. So there's also areas, um, along Santa Cruz Avenue, as has been discussed. Um, again, we've got retail there. A lot of it is ripe for, um, if a new owner comes in for re, uh, rebuilding, how do we make sure that it's not, that it's, someone is able to build a taller building, that it's multi-use rather than just retail? How do we encourage residential downtown? Is that something that's included here? It's, I haven't seen it in the report specifically.
So that is something that we can look at if, if residential is something that is a minimum, not an optional item, that is something that we can zone in. So as sites redevelop, if there is the desire to see every project have residential, um, that can be considered. Uh, that, that is something similar to, you know, for, uh, ground level development, fronting Santa Cruz. It needs to be retail, you know, to kind of activate the street. Something, we can do something similar if that is the direction of the city council.
So, okay, so you need to, what I'm, I guess what I'm wondering is, it's unclear to me how much of this that I'm asking about is already in the, in the plan. I definitely saw that the R3, there was a plan to reduce the size or take away the minimum lot size, all of that. But, um, keep going. Okay. Um, so there's also just, um, along El Camino. There's properties that just jump out to me. I'm just made a list tonight off the top of my head. So there's no doubt many more, but, um, there's an Arby's, there's a Cook's and Arby's. This is on, uh, Live Oak and El Camino Real. And the Arby's has been vacant for years and years. I believe it's owned by the people with Cook's. Behind that, there's a Masonic Lodge. Are those properties that are being considered? I would like them to be considered for, um, residential. I certainly want to see Cook's stay. But I also believe there's a lot of potential there with the retail and the restaurants. Um, there is, you did get the, um, Victoria Station. There is a whole, um, by the guild on both sides of the guild, again on El Camino. There's older buildings that when they do turnover, when they are redeveloped, it would be really nice to have those be mixed use, have those be, um, with taller, with residential. Um, there is between Oak Grove and Santa Cruz Avenue on El Camino, especially on the west side of the street. I, um, there's a lot of older buildings that again, when they get redeveloped, it would be nice to have them be residential mixed use. Across the street, there's Jason's, um, restaurant, which is currently, um, was shut. Across the street, there's Jason's Restaurant, which is currently with shut down because of the ADA requirements a couple of years ago and has never been resurrected. There's the gas station, which actually has been recently redone, but it would be nice to have those again as residential. Going over to and there's other, you know, there may be others as you go down. I saw you had Ducky's Car Wash, but just others in that area. Going over toward on Ravenswood at Alma, there's right on the corner, there's the fitness gym. And then next to that, there's some, I believe at this point vacant, there's where the old the Jam's Deli was. There's lots of places, which I think some of which are even vacant now could be opportunity sites. And I think that's sort of and then the big five area, I'd definitely like to see that have be encouraged to be once it's redeveloped. I understand that at this point there's no plans, but it would be a shame to not. If it does at some point, if there's a change in owners or if the current owner sees an opportunity, it would be something that is right along the transit and should include residential. And so I guess the other piece of it is just I would certainly, I don't know what the rest of the councils feels, but I would certainly like to see how can we actually? Some of these as they're redeveloped, can we mandate that it's mixed use as opposed to just retail?
Vice Mayor Nash or Mayor? Can I ask a follow kind of question to what you're thinking? So I actually just have like a overall question about the sites and about all the sites in general. So are there must be a rationale why those weren't included originally? Or like why Martian Bohannon weren't wasn't included? Are you saving sites for future housing elements? Or is there known information? Or I'm just kind of curious. Because I assume you thought of those sites and for some reason they just never came to us. And I just didn't know if there was an overarching
And they've been raised before.
Okay, if there's an overarching reason.
We're definitely not saving sites. This this element is is different from previous elements because there's there's much more. There's been reference tonight, there's much more sort of strict guidance. In, you know, people say HCD, but it's really it's really new state laws that HCD is implementing. So new state laws that have very detailed requirements about sites. We used to be able to go out, drive around, oh, that's an old building, that should be a housing site. Now you have to clearly show that it's it's it has a good scoring under affordable, excuse me, affirmably furthering fair housing. So a lot of the the work that Asher and Sung have done with the mapping is based around those locational factors. The age of the property, the condition of the property, the land improvement value. In other words, what's what's the ratio of the the value of the improvements versus the value of the land? And to be able to show that it's reasonably conceivable or even almost expected that it would redevelop within the eight year planning period, much more focused on that this cycle. And so what I would ask the council is if you allow us to go back and look at the sites that that have been brought up tonight. But but still sticking with those 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 factors that we're really obligated to stick with under state law and see if we missed anything. But rather than rather than just throwing them in, I think it to respect the whole process and to meet and to at the end of the day to have a defensible product that we can we can go to HCD with and really stand behind and say it meets all these requirements. Give us a chance to run it through all those filters again. And if we find a site that it's meeting those all those requirements that we didn't include, then then we would then we would include it.
I very much respect that and understand that. I guess I'm thinking that what I want to make sure is as sites are redeveloped, that basically I my understanding is that if we rezone that it doesn't necessarily mean that they feed into the HCD to the requirements, especially because some of them just won't meet the requirements. But what I'm concerned about is if we don't address it now, that they'll be redeveloped at and we'll be missing opportunities as well as well, they will miss opportunities. So sorry, these aren't things that need to go as opportunity sites per se, but is it something that needs to go into the EIR so that they can be rezoned? If that's what we decide.
Got it. Yeah.
So if I may just follow up on that, so just similar to our earlier conversation, so all of these sites already have an existing zoning designation that would allow for residential. If you would like it to be required, then that's something that we can put in as an amendment to the the sub areas zoning in the specific plan. So if that is the and I don't believe that that would be a consideration of the EIR. We're already capturing the potential additional housing units from the specific plan in that four thousand unit that we're recommending. But the zoning for the specific plan, sub area zoning could be amended to require residential uses based upon redevelopment of the site.
So I guess the other piece of it, this is just at this point. I am somewhat uncomfortable with going to a hundred units per acre. Just I would love to see renderings of this, but just generally that has been. I'm wondering if we can do more sites at maybe eighty units per acre as opposed to fewer sites at a hundred units. Well, I'm sure we that's a decision, but just this is one of the pieces that I feel like we really haven't discussed enough is just what does that mean? And if what we're doing is just throwing it in and we're looking at generally the number of units, go for it. But if we're actually trying to finesse, what exactly is the density? What exactly is the heights? That's where I believe we need much more discussion.
Thank you. And just for some comparison, so we're like the hundred dwelling units to the acre. So certainly in the specific plan where it feeds along a major transit stop, the a hundred percent affordable housing development could even exceed a hundred dwellings to the acre, the density bonus is unlimited. So the AHO at a hundred dwellings to the acre is sort of a somewhere between like the eighty percent increase that one might one would receive under state density bonus law. And this would kick it up a little bit more and help incentivize additional additional housing. So there are already existing state laws that do provide for that level of density.
Thank you. Actually, now that you're mentioning it, I remember reading it, but it just now really made an impact. Thank you.
And just for clarity, I know there was the the Martian Bohannon sites and to just to further clarify or expand on Jeff's point about sort of the the criteria that we're looking at and making sure that we're hitting the affirmably further fair housing criteria. Just to point out that the sites over in that area feed into the the Redwood City School District.
Understood. Those that area is currently, I believe, zoned to all office. And so
That is correct.
Right.
Hey. Thanks for that. So just a couple of things I wanted to you know, point out. And so I do understand this as as like a sort of a regulatory exercise that we're trying to adhere to and meet. And so then it is identifying sites in connection with that regulatory where the state has given us an exact number or, you know, provided us with a formula. I think when we say like outside of that, you know, we should look for building residential everywhere the opportunity might exist. Then my concern become becomes what's the North Star? And have we had that discussion with residents? Like, is it a fifty thousand person or resident in Low Park? Is it a forty five thousand resident in Low Park? And I think that that would have to that discussion and engagement would have to precede something that sort of goes outside of this regulatory requirement. And so that would be my, you know, my, my, my concern about sort of just saying like, well, outside of whether we get credit for something or not. Let's look at at the opportunity to to, you know, build build housing. The other thing I I'll just say, because obviously it is in my district and I'm not like opposed to the idea of looking at the sort of Bohannon area. But part of the and this is where it gets a distinction of like, you know, what's an area? What's a neighborhood? What's a district? And so part of what I've heard is a concern about whether you call it the east side or the north side of of the city, there being a concentration of 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 development. And so then, you know, if we look at and there is the opportunity ability to sort of, you know, change the zoning to to Bohannon and and upzone it. Then it still would have a scenario where a we are concentrating high density development in a specific area of the city. It would just be that we sort of kind of moved it over the freeway a little bit to another district. But but it still would, to me, I think, call upon a lot of the concerns that that has been expressed since since my involvement in the city government, especially if then we're going to engage in analysis of like possibly downzoning. You know, the the M two area or what that might might imply. And so I just want to say that, like, you know, point out that that it would be that we were saying, well, in one area of the city, we think we've gone the wrong way and and we want to downzone that. But in that same area of the city, but it's in it's right across the freeway, we 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 want to sort of dramatically upzone. I I think that there is there is some logical inconsistency if we go down that that road as I see it. But again, like I say, I do think that, you know, that it should be looked at. I do think if I mean, some of those offices are are obviously newer and have been been, you know, renovated. The post office certainly has not. So and I and and so and so, yeah, and so and you know, the federal government is selling property in Millo Park, so who knows? So again, I just wanted to share that, but but certainly want to give you the opportunity to respond, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. And I'm very glad you said that because I do want to say I'm not looking for increasing our population to huge amounts. I'm just trying to have more opportunity to do the building because we don't. All of these are just opportunity sites we then have to actually be built on. There has to be the redevelopment and that's something where it just gives more opportunity of where to do it. I also, again, am definitely keeping an open mind, but generally would prefer slightly less dense over more spaces and places that have large parking lots, some that have large stores where we may or may not work. Commercial I see as places that if we were to continue to have retail, but then have houses up above. That's something that but without, I'm not trying to increase the population.
And and just just from like the thirty thousand foot level, I'm totally supportive of that or with you on that of spreading the law like, right? And so so this idea of of and if it is possible, again, sort of not concentrating. And even in what we might consider like, you know, really great opportunity sites like S R U S G S, but not looking at them, but looking at sort of maybe a scenario where they aren't as dense, but we we have identified additional sites that can, you know, that can absorb some of some of that that but but I still see it as absorb some of that what we are required to produce.
Absolutely. And just I think you're alluding to this, but open space is so important, especially as we get more dense, which we will have to do with this housing element.
Councilmember Mueller.
Yeah, I hate to bring it up, but I don't believe and I guess the city attorney can tell me if she disagrees. But I candidly don't believe that there is enough notice within the item that the the staff item before us tonight to consider downzoning. I don't think there's notice to those those property owners that that would be considered. There was notice to the public. I don't think it was within the call of the document that was put before us. So I am concerned there'd be a Brown Act issue there. It's not it wasn't listed as one of the items for consideration this evening within the staff report.
It actually was. It's in the October twenty, it's in the document from November sixteenth responding to questions from city council members on housing element updates. So it's an appendix.
It's not one of the items that was put for for consideration this evening. I don't believe I sincerely don't believe that there's requisite notice to the public tonight that it'd be an item that we'd be considering actually speaking about. And that's not that's just I just think that that's just where it is. And that has nothing to do with whether or not the merits of it. I just have Brown Act consideration of whether or not there's notice to the public that their council would be make taking a consideration of on that issue this evening.
Okay, well, we'll take a five minute break and of course I'll let the city attorney respond when we get back. So so we'll we'll take a break and when we come back, I will open it up for a second public comment. But I asked, obviously, if you've made a public comment already, please don't make a public comment again. But as I said before, I saw some, you know, a decent, a number of new people come on. And so want to give them the opportunity to provide public comment if they so desire. So we'll take a five minute break, come back with public comment, have the city attorney respond to the the issue about whether we can take any polls on downzoning and then have the council members provide their their direction on on the items out as outlined in the in the staff report.
Is it Cynthia?
Yes, it is. Sorry about that.
Good, go right ahead. Thank you.
Okay. Hi, this is Cynthia Harris, District Three. I'm a longtime resident in Lynnfield Oaks, also on the planning commission, but I'll speak speaking for myself. I would like to agree with many of the other callers early in many of the, you know, just to thank the, the staff and the M group for putting this together for us. I think there's been a ton of work since we last saw it. I realize that we need to meet the state requirement, but I would hope that we will do so in such a way that we're actually successful building the housing that is needed, especially at the lower income levels. We also need to provide folks who have been excluded in the past opportunities to enrichness of our town. And from an environmental standpoint, we need to build infill along our transportation and services corridors versus having a large part of our workforce commuting long distances to Melo Park from far away. Yes, that will increase our population, but to a more environmentally sustainable end. Additionally, as far as downtown is concerned, I would love to see some vigorous work that could involve the parking lots and any sites along Santa Cruz that could be mixed use. This provides not only our much needed housing, but also an improved downtown with support for new and existing retail and restaurants. A new vision for downtown is definitely needed. And finally, as far as the 15 versus 20% affordable, it seems if we make it easier and faster for developers to build, they will be able to pencil out at a 20% level by giving time and money in the approval process. Those are my comments. Thanks.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Eric Burmeister, followed by Andrew Bilak.
My name is Eric Burmeister and I am a resident of District Two. I also happen to serve as the superintendent of Melo Park City School District. My comments tonight are my own, but I would like to share just in general, some comments about the district's interests, but not speaking for the board in particular. First, I also want to join everyone in thanking the staff for their hard work as a leader of a public entity myself. I know how difficult it is to present information in a way that meets all the needs of the various stakeholders, but then also presents an opportunity for council members, or in my case, board members, to provide the necessary and desired input. I would like to just echo some of the council members' comments from earlier, particularly council member Nash's comments about ensuring that we have an opportunity for the community to give input on what decisions are being made and when they're being made. And it just strikes me as interesting that many of the council members seemed unclear as to what they were supposed to be deciding tonight. And if council members are unclear, it's probably pretty easy to say that the public is probably unclear as well. And so whatever we can do to really make sure prior to meetings and during the process, we're making it clear specifically what decisions are being made along each step of the process. I think it will bring folks along who are maybe concerned, but generally speaking are supportive of increasing housing, particularly for low income families in Melo Park City School District. I think there are a lot of community members who are willing to give the benefit of the doubt, but there's also a lot at stake here. And to council member Nash's point, I think it's really important if we want to gather and keep community support for the efforts that the city council and staff are making, we have to be really clear at each step of the way, what decisions
I would like to just echo some of the council members' comments from earlier, particularly Councilmember Nash's comments about ensuring that we have an opportunity for the community to give input on what decisions are being made and when they're being made. And it just strikes me as interesting that many of the council members seemed unclear as to what they were supposed to be deciding tonight. And if council members are unclear, it's probably pretty easy to say that the public is probably unclear as well. And so whatever we can do to really make sure prior to meetings and during the process, we're making it clear specifically what decisions are being made along each step of the process. I think it will bring folks along who are maybe concerned, but generally speaking, are supportive of increasing housing, particularly for low-income families in Menlo Park City School District. I think there are a lot of community members who are willing to give the benefit of the doubt, but there's also a lot at stake here. And to Councilmember Nash's point, I think it's really important if we want to gather and keep community support for the efforts that the city council and staff are making, we have to be really clear at each step of the way what decisions are being made and when they're being made so that it's clear for people how they can get involved in the public input process. I know for me, not as a housing expert, but as an education expert, the impacts of the decisions you're making really impact the work that we do as a school district, and we want to be supportive. But if we don't understand what decisions are being made and don't have an opportunity to give the appropriate input while they're being made, then decisions might be being made before people realize that they are being made and then feel like they've been left out of the process. So it is our interest as a school district, my interest as a resident and superintendent, that we all work together to be really clear about the steps along the way, because some of this can seem very difficult to understand for the average public attendee. Thank you so much for all your hard work.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Andrew Bilak, followed by Katie Baruzzi.
Hi, this is Andrew Bilak. I'm Associate Director of Development at Mid Penn Housing. I appreciate all the work that staff and the consultant team and the council has done in this process so far. I think there's been a lot of great ideas, a lot of great work so far that's got us to this point in the process, and I think there's a lot of valuable policies and considerations in the current staff report and that are being discussed here tonight. I also appreciate that, you know, there was recognition of our comment that where there were a couple sites that have been proposed for affordable housing that needed to be included, and it sounds like there is. Those are going to be included in the next iteration of this document. So thank you for that recognition. I also just want to really just make an observation about the density. I think the discussion around the affordable housing overlay area and the efforts to expand that and refine the approach is absolutely welcome. I want to note that, you know, we have provided some information about other projects that Mid Penn has been involved in, in the peninsula. And for some of the smaller sites, particularly when we're talking about under an acre, there have been cases where we've been doing densities that are a little bit over 100, sometimes somewhere in the range of 120, 130 units per acre. So with that in mind, I recognize, as was noted in the opening presentation, there are state policies that allow for higher density, actually unlimited density in the case of sites that are within a half mile from transit. But depending upon the city's appetite, there may be a consideration about whether there is thinking of a density levels that may be targeted just on some of the smaller sites that may allow for additional density where appropriate. So I just want to throw that out there. I think it can be helpful to consider additional density, even above 100 units per acre as an option. But I also recognize this is a really significant gain from where the city currently is and appreciate all the thought around that.
Thank you for your comment. So our next speaker is going to be Katie Baruzzi. And I would like to invite anyone who hasn't had the opportunity to speak on item C1 to engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen or press star nine if you're calling in. And Katie?
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. I'm Katie Baruzzi. I serve on the Complete Streets Commission, but I'm going to talk about housing and obviously speaking for myself. I just, a lot of people have made some great points. I wanted to add a few things. So I was really struck by Vice Mayor Nash's comment about not wanting to add more people or grow the city. We've done this already. We, you know, we've made decisions over the last eight years or so that have led to one company alone adding 35, up to 35,000 employees a day. So we were, not you specifically, Vice Mayor Nash, but people sitting at this dais have made decisions in the past that have resulted in some really unbalanced growth. And so I love the idea of rezoning and refocusing on housing. And I think that whatever's been good enough for the Bayfront area should be good enough for downtown. On a more positive note, I read a great article this evening about Somerville, New Jersey. It's a city of about 12,000 residents that managed to grow by 10% and totally revitalized their downtown. They added density downtown. They turned downtown into pedestrian mall. Like, we keep hearing about how people want more vibrancy and they like the walkable downtown feel. But we haven't historically had enough foot traffic to really make it viable. So I think this is an area where we can be a little bit bold. And I would encourage you to continue to think in that direction and see what's possible. And that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And seeing no further hands raised. Mayor Combs, you may continue.
All right. Thank you, City Clerk Karen. And I also want to thank, obviously, Superintendent Burmeister, Commissioners Harris, and Baruzzi, and Mr. Bilak for their comments. I guess it's that second public comment where you get the big wigs that come out. No, but your comments are very much appreciated and well-received. Now, before we went to break, there was a concern expressed by Councilmember Mueller about whether we could take a sort of informal poll regarding this issue of downzoning certain parts of the city. So I want to give the city attorney an opportunity to chime in on the concerns that were expressed.
So point or my concern wasn't about an informal poll. My concern was about a poll that would then staff would act upon in their work.
Yeah, thank you for the correction. City Attorney Doherty.
Sure. Thanks. I am, I do not have concerns from Brown Act perspective that the notice provided this evening does not provide sufficient notice under the Brown Act to pursue options related to the housing element. So I'm not concerned about providing staff direction. As for Councilmember Mueller, your concerns regarding the public's involvement and notice, I would leave that to you all to decide as a matter of policy. I don't believe that that's an issue that triggers any legal concerns on my behalf.
Okay. Respectfully, City Attorney Doherty, I disagree with you because I believe that if there had been, and the reason why I raise this for my colleagues is because I believe that if there had been sufficient notice to the public, we would have heard from property owners and perhaps their lawyers with respect to this issue. And there would be considerable feedback that I think may impact the discussion this evening, whether that have been from, so I just, I am not comfortable at the outset of starting that discussion without clear notice because of the potential of litigation later on around such an issue. Because it, and that's just, if the council wants to go down that point, I'll probably just abstain on those issues because of that. And it has nothing to do with the merits of whether I think we should or not. It has to do with if we're going down that road. I believe it's a serious road that property owners will take incredibly seriously, given the land value involved.
Okay, um, then, all right, well, we'll move on. And when we get to that point, I will take a pulse to see the comfort of my colleagues' desire to take a pulse on that issue, given Councilmember Mueller's concerns, but also obviously accepting that the city attorney is comfortable with an informal poll if there is a decision to take it. But I also don't want to go out in that direction if there is, if there is concern from, you know, from council. What I would say, though, that like if we don't sort of take up this issue today, I do think it is an issue that Councilmember Taylor has referenced a number of times. And I do think that, you know, she's owed a sort of a vote of the council on the issue, on whether, you know, staff should pursue this issue. And so if it can't happen today, then it will happen, it should, I will say, happen in the future. And I will defer to a future mayor to make that decision when in the future. But, okay, I'll leave that there. With that, I was going to go again to the staff report and then make my way through the recommendation. And so the first, you know, bullet is this idea of rezoning for approximately 37 housing units that are geographically dispersed throughout the city, primarily in City Council Districts Two and Five. I won't read the rest of the bullet, but obviously, we all have. And is there, you know, support for that recommendation? Or is there concern? Or is there a desire to sort of tweak it in some way?
That's me.
Oh, okay. Where can I see that? Councilmember?
Yeah, I just wanted clarification. It says 3,700, but we've been talking about 4,000. So can staff please clarify?
Thank you. Yes. So we're looking, seeking for a recommendation to study up to 4,000 housing units. That would be potentially the 3,700 that would, excuse me, be from the 51 sites that we were discussing. And then we do anticipate with the upzoning of the downtown specific plan area and then the R3 properties that there would be some additional units to be studied from that. And so it would increase it up to 4,000 housing units.
Thank you. Mayor Simms is supportive of that.
I'll go first, I guess. I, well, I'm not first. You went first, huh? But no, 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 that was totally fine. I'm also supportive of this recommendation. If there is no, I won't necessarily ask everyone to specifically say I'm supportive, but obviously, if there's concerns, then you'll let me know. So seeing no one expressing any additional concerns, I'll move on to the next recommendation bullet. And that's upzoning sites within El Camino Real downtown specific plan area to allow 30 dwelling units per acre at base level density and a potential increase for the maximum bonus level density. And I'll say I'm generally supportive of this recommendation. Does any council member, Vice Mayor Nash?
What are, where are we at on the current residential cap for downtown?
So let me just, I think we're about 75% of the 680 units.
And my understanding is that there's, from Councilmember Wilson's question, your answer is that there really is not any great importance of letting go of that cap. It's essentially, the caps are not enforceable at this point anyway, that there's no real reason to keep the cap.
I believe if we want to realize the opportunities that we're identifying today here on our sites and then additional upzoning in the specific plan, then yes, we would need to remove the cap in order to realize that potential.
Thank you.
Right, Councilmember Wilson.
Thank you. I just wanted to, since it looks like staff is, this is our opportunity to give a little more input about the downtown specific plan. That, I think my, in terms of like at a high level, this is such an opportunity for our downtown. And we were talking about our downtown last night. We all want to see our downtown alive. And this is kind of where our adding of housing units is a huge opportunity for those of us who are nervous about it to also have some vitality. So I think in terms of kind of where to head in terms of office, retail, housing things, I'd like staff to look at ways to incentivize kind of first-floor retail with residential on top, kind of that vision of that mixed-use thing, potentially lowering the FAR on office, whatever it does to make it more attractive for us to get that vision of, you know, I don't want to say like cool Paris neighborhoods or whatever, but that thing that we all kind of want to, I don't want to speak for everyone, but that kind of revitalization and that re-envisioning of downtown, I think this is our chance. And then also, in terms of, this might get in a little bit to the Housing Commission policies that they were looking at, but I know doing what we can to not get those like large luxury penthouse units and instead to get more units, so whatever you can do to tinker with that. And then I know that you've met with affordable housing developers and market REIT developers. I don't know if you've had a chance to meet with mixed-use developers, but getting a sense from them on the mix to make all this happen. And not just downtown, but maybe in like the Sharon Heights area as well, but how do we make all these things feasible? So that's my overall, but I'm very supportive and excited about what could happen downtown. So thank you.
Yeah, and I'll add, I'm actually supportive of all those points. And I do know that like in one of the issues specifically with what I call like the Santa Cruz proper issue has been parking, right, and those parking requirements. And again, I remember my time on the Planning Commission, we only saw one Santa Cruz proper project, and it was the Union Bank Building, I think. And in there, it was large enough that he could do underground parking, right? And then there was the retail and then the office, and I think a housing, if I'm remembering correctly, the ideal, I think that we all want. So again, very, very much supportive of seeing that realized by Vice Mayor Nash.
Thank you. Agree. And as long as we're talking about the BMR inclusionary units, I'd like to see if we can consider square footage in addition to number of units. One of the properties downtown at 115 El Camino Real had, basically, if you have just the units, you know this, they came in at four units when five units was the requirement. And they actually have some very large penthouse units. And so if we can actually do something so that we're not just getting people creeping right up to the top and then having large units, that would be great. Thank you. And again, whatever we can do to encourage the property owners who are there to actually turn over either, redevelop the buildings with the residential.
So if I may, Mayor, just clarify a few things. So with the, so we are looking to establish a minimum density as well. So hopefully that will help achieve more units on a site. And then I think to address an earlier question about the sort of the sizes, that is something that was also a potential strategy to look at in terms of having a sliding scale for density and square footage so that as you increase in density, you also then are able to sort of unlock the more square footage so that you wouldn't have, I think to your point about having fewer luxury units. I think Councilmember Wilson was talking about having, you know, very large and few units. And so by having the pairing, hopefully, we'll be able to achieve more units and that smaller and potentially more affordable pricing.
One more thing about, and maybe this should have gone where we were looking at 30 units. I'm not sure where this goes, but in terms of thinking about open space, when we're looking at FAR and height and density and all that, exploring kind of those trade-offs to get more open space. So there might be an appetite to have to go higher, depending on where and what the setbacks are, to get additional open space. Because a density can feel so different depending on the setback and the, like, the circumstance, if there's trees or just if it's on a corner, like what's going on. So just being sensitive to that height, I know initially can sound really scary, but it can yield, you know, some things that people really want to. So not just be like, thinking height's a bad thing because in some circumstances, it might actually be worth it to what it could bring for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilson. Moving on to the third bullet modification, and just so, obviously, we're getting a pulse and making sure the council is okay with these recommendations. And and people are adding in tweaks. At the end of this, do you guys need an official motion on this? Is is that what you're you're looking for? Okay, okay. So then, but I'm gonna say it. I don't know that we can sort of build in all of these these suggestions. So like, how how are we going to record that? Just an understanding that that there was general support for for these additional suggestions and have that that sort of built in. Is that, are you comfortable with that? Is the council comfortable with that? Okay, all right, so, all right, okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, of course.
Yeah, I would just say like, the suggestion I just made about height, like if somebody doesn't want that, definitely speak up. And I'll speak up if somebody makes a suggestion that I think is not great.
I think that's a fine approach. Okay, so then the the third bullet modifications of affordable housing overlay to allow for up to a hundred dwelling units per acre for a hundred percent affordable housing developments and or increase the density bonus for both affordable and mixed income projects. Is there general support for that?
So I'd like to know, it sounds like there actually, the state does not require or does not allow us to have a maximum density for affordable housing. So how does this fit in with?
It's a little, little, little different than that. There is a new state law. I'm gonna call it AB seventeen sixty-three that allows for an unlimited density for a hundred percent affordable housing projects within a half mile of transit. But you, that in and of itself doesn't negate the city's ability to have a maximum density.
So this is actually providing us a cap, or this is giving them, anyway, is this like helping us limit density, or is this actually encouraging density?
It's really, it's establishing a local alternative to the the law I just mentioned, which is a which is a density bonus law, which means the applicant has to proactively request that it be utilized for their for their project. And so the goal with the hundred dwelling units breaker was to allow for a high enough level to to see that the majority of the affordable housing developments we surveyed up and down the peninsula, they're ranging between about seventy units breaker on the low end, very few of those. And most of them were between a hundred and a hundred and forty units breaker with an average of about a hundred overall. So we saw that as like a key ingredient. And rather than torturing the base density, which we wanted to keep at thirty units breaker as as the default density, and not and not unnecessarily raise land costs by increasing the base density across the board in a wide variety of locations within the city and not have to create a complicated mechanism to get affordable housing projects up to that higher higher density and just and just jump right to that to that hundred dense hundred dwelling units breaker limit. But you are correct that if if a, if a if a affordable housing developer opted to go with the state density bonus law, they could, the the city wouldn't be able to implement any any density limit. But hopefully, the city's affordable housing overlay, which is effectively a an alternative to the state density bonus law, will have other features that make it more attractive to use that rather than the than the state version.
Is it, is it possible to get a memo on this? And very honestly, I am not in favor of it till I understand it better and under know more about what the hundred dwelling units per acre looks like. That really does sound like a lot.
I mean, I would be comfortable with removing it from the overall recommendations to but so but I I'm gonna go to staff, because this is a key component, this this affordable housing overlay. So what what's the impact of it not being there?
It's really a key ingredient of our strategy to make the plan actionable and realistic and achievable. And one way to think of it is if we receive five one acre projects and three two acre projects over the eight year period at the at this density level we're talking about for a hundred percent affordable projects, then that that would be the main thing, allowing the city to meet meet the housing requirement and which I think the city has adopted as their own goal. They really want to meet or even achieve or exceed that. That's really our, that's really the the thing we've built the whole strategy around. And we do find when we look at projects approved within the last ten years, we really need to be at or around that that number.
Councilmember Wilson.
Yeah, I mean, I can't see how we can do this without it, because it's really about creating a delta on a advantage for affordable housing over market rate housing to 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 make it happen. But my question, Mr. Bradley, is, I guess I'm still a little confused, and maybe this is what Mayor Vice Mayor Nash is getting at. So why would a developer pick our local affordable housing overlay instead of the state one? And like you said, because it has like a package of things that make it more attractive. Can you explain that piece to us?
Yeah, I think the the most important thing that the the city's ordinance does now is it has a built in waiver of impact fees, looking to Deanna for confirmation. Whereas under the, under the state density bonus law, the applicant would have to use one of their three concessions or waivers to request that. And so when they're, when these projects were coming together, you know, every concession or waiver has to be very carefully awaited.
Can you outline what those three concessions or waivers are?
They're essentially, there's there's, they could be different things, but they're they're they essentially allow a developer to request a waiver from, for example, a setback requirement or a height requirement or or payment of of fees would be a concession, reduction in parking below the requirements. So usually, physical development regulation requirements that they they seek relief from. And so the local version can have some of those things just built right into it and and can and reinforce other things like height limits. Like Palo Alto has an affordable housing overlay zone that allows for unlimited density, but requires a fifty foot height limit. So the the local version can really build on, you know, what's important to the to the community versus the state law, which applies across the board, across the entire state.
So if we were to agree to the hundred unit acre AHO tonight, do we still then have an opportunity to figure out what that package looks like and weigh in on height?
Absolutely.
Setbacks and things like that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And if I may just further clarify on that. So with the hundred dwelling units to the acre, so as Jeff mentioned, so it would be unlimited in areas that are near major transit stops and other areas that are not. The the density bonus would be eighty percent. So in order to actually capture a hundred dwelling units to the acre, your base density is already fairly high to get the eighty percent bonus to capture a hundred dwelling units to the acre. So in zoning districts where maybe you don't want to increase the land costs or the base density is, you want to potentially max at forty or fifty dwelling units to the acre, you would not be able to achieve a hundred dwellings to the acre, which then makes it more affordable for a house, an affordable housing developer to actually come in and build the project.
Honestly, I can, I I understand that this is necessary to, for the affordable housing. I am uncomfortable. I don't feel like I don't mind saying yes now as because I understand this is part of the NOP that was, there still will be time to, you know, put the brakes on if need be, if, but I would like to see some document that it sort of explains the various different alternatives, because I know there is this state housing density, there's anyway, just all the different density bonuses that are allowed to make sure that we know what we're getting into and what the height requirement would be, so that we're not just opening a floodgate. And I do very much want affordable housing. I very much know that this is part of it, but I also, just at this point, it's a leap of faith, and I'd like a little bit more information, please. So I'm comfortable going ahead, as this is a component, and it sounds like it will stop everything, but I do want more information.
All right. Thank you, Vice Mayor Nash. And and just sort of, I think furthering what you said, no one's property rights will vest at this vote at this moment. And so and so there is so, but but I think that the concern is 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 valid. And so and and I do think it's important to raise it, raise it now. Okay, so so then moving on, removal of the ten thousand square foot minimum lot size requirement for our three properties located around downtown, which would allow all sites up to thirty dwelling units an acre. Are there, is there general support, any concern, questions? Councilmember Wilson.
My only concern, and I I didn't look at the zoning map today, so the R three, I'm guessing that's around like Live Oak and Roble. Is that is that where that is? My only concern is displacement. If 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 there's two story kind of naturally affordable apartments now, and we're, those are going to be torn down, and we don't have proper tenant protections in place. So I I'm curious if staff has thought about that, because I think for the most part, we've avoided redeveloping already residential for that reason. And I want to make sure we're not doing anything that'll have unintended consequences.
I think I think the team, the project team is in alignment with the Housing Commission, that the that the tenant protection ordinance needs to be revisited and updated again, as within the housing element itself as a as a work program item.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that that was very clear to everyone in the community that that we, it's kind of a necessary component, or else we might lose, we're gonna get new residents but lose some of the ones that we already have. So thank you very much.
So does this apply for all R three? So even when it has a letter numbers after it, this is for all R three? Not just R three?
So there, so it it would just be the R three, not without a letter. It's specific, the way that it's described here, it's specific to those properties that are R three around downtown, and there's three areas in our code that are defined that as what's considered around downtown.
So there's R three, R three X, R three A, R three A X, R three C. Does it apply to all of those or just to R three?
It would, the way that is recommended, just to R three.
And just around downtown, so the around Stone Pine Lane, I believe I just saw on the, I've just got it map. Actually, I can't read it.
So R three X is is R three at the base, but the X signifies that it was a conditional development.
So there's, there is R three, and I can't read, I took a, anyway, there's R three, I believe it's around Stone Pine Lane. Does it apply there as well, or is it strictly?
Would it be possible to put the zoning map on the screen?
I have no objection to if it can be done, but um.
This is actually co with them group. I'm happy to share my screen. I have it open, if that'll help folks.
But it's Stone Pine Lane around downtown.
Exactly what my point is. That's what what does this cover? It's in the downtown specific plan.
So the extent of that area would be the the area bounded by San Antonio, Alma, and Sonal, Mark, Markason, and Ravenswood. So that would be one area.
So does it include around Roble and all of the R three over in the?
Yes, so that that area would be Arbor, Santa Cruz, El Camino Middle.
So right now, we're looking at earth, anything that's R three is included that of on what we're looking at right now or not?
I'm sorry, so the, so it would remain R three, so in this, and it would be the parcels currently right now, the R three parcels that are greater than ten thousand square feet has the ability to have a higher density. And so the proposal would be to remove that minimum lot size. And so the area would remain the same, the zoning would generally remain the same, would remain the same. It would be, if you will, text amendments to the the code to allow for all of the parcels in the geographic referenced area to take advantage of a higher density.
In the, can you re-explain the area one more time?
Sure. So there's three areas. So the the first area, and this is for R three around downtown. So the first area is the area bounded by University, Valparaiso, El Camino, and Oak Grove. Then there's a second area on the opposite side of downtown, so moving to Arbor, Santa Cruz, El Camino, and Middle. And then moving across El Camino, we have the area bounded by San Antonio, Alma, and Sonal, Markason, and Ravenswood. And it would be the darker brown R three or orange, it depends on what your screen looks like.
May, may I ask, does it include R three anywhere else in the city?
Not the recommended, we can have that, certainly take that feedback. What staff is recommending is the R three around just that, those three areas that I I referenced.
Thank you.
And that is because it's near transit as well?
Right, near downtown services, transit, supporting the downtown core.
Do you know that the, how many were under ten thousand square, like what magnitude of a change is that?
Well, I think a good like sort of reference would be sort of going to Roble. So so those are those quad apartment buildings like, and again, like each one of those are individual parcels, like, right? Because they have like the sort of kind of, there's a flag lot situation, but is one of those like ten thousand, ten thousand square foot? And I think they're not. And and so I think that this would would include all of them where they're not included now. But this is just me going out on a limb, so I could be very wrong.
So I I think for sort of comparisons, so the existing R three parcels that are greater than ten thousand square feet are approximately forty acres currently. And if we expand it to all the R three properties around town, we're looking about a hundred and ten acres.
So it's more than doubling it.
But but that's that's around the entire city. That's not.
No, that's just around the downtown.
Oh, that's just around the downtown. Okay.
So we're adding, we're adding, so ten thousand square feet is about a quarter of an acre. So so on a quarter of an acre, you do one fourth of thirty, which is seven and a half units. I mean, is that what we're talking about, that that small, that smaller lots can now have like around seven and eight?
Right, the way that the R three, it was, you would calculate the number of units based upon sort of this minimum lot size, even though it were like acres, so you like each unit would be around three thousand square feet. And that would, not the unit itself, but had determined what the density would be. And so it it was limiting in terms of how many units you could actually achieve. And now with SB nine and, you know, the the larger parcels are being able to take advantage of this increased density, felt that the location made it appropriate. Some some may need to consolidate parcels in order to take advantage of, you know, more opportunities, but wanting to remove that that potential barrier of the the lot size to to capture additional development potential.
And why did you not decide to do that across the city?
I I think just I, I think just having the location where it is, already having the ability to go to 30 dwellings to the acre. For those lots that are greater than 10,000 square feet, so trying to do some incremental change.
R3 generally across the city, if they're larger than 10,000 square. Feet, they are not, outside of this area, they're already not allowed to. They may not go up to 30 units.
That, that's correct, I believe it's 13.1 is about the, the maximum.
Got it, okay, so this is essentially just bringing those smaller lots up to this standard that.
The larger lots.
The larger lots do, which is different than other parts of the city.
That's correct.
Thank you.
And, and, and just in, in these scenarios, right, for these larger lots. Just recall, right, that there's still sort of height and setback restrictions that, that all come to, into play, correct? And that would obviously impact how, the extent to which you could exploit a parcel in terms of units you're able to add.
Sure, there, there are other development regulations that can apply, I think there, there was an earlier question. So right now there is actually a split height between what the density is at the higher end above, I think 20. It is 40 feet is the maximum, but there are. Other setbacks of, you know, 10 or 20 feet for side or front. And so those. Would could remain, or if there's interest in, I, I heard, you know, maybe looking at greater outdoor space or open space. And so do you exchange that for, for height? So potentially having a smaller footprint, higher building, greater open space.
Yeah, thanks. Okay. So. So then that's all of the, the recommendations. And then there were the thing, the two items that, that staff wanted feedback on. The first item was, was modification to retail commercial zoning districts to allow for residential uses. And other potential development standards to encourage the direction of mixed use developments. Any, generally it seemed like the, the feedback was supportive, but please, concerns, questions about, about, about this? From anyone? So it's, so I'm on the first page of the, the staff report. Under sort of recommendations and then that second set of bullets. Where the, they were, the staff is seeing feedback. On whether the following program should be explored as part of the housing element update. And one of those things was modifications to retail commercial zoning districts. To allow for residential uses and other potential development standards to encourage the production of, of mixed use developments. And so the C2, C2A, C2B, C2S, C4 and P districts. Will be evaluated for potential consolidation to simplify implementation and understanding of the regulations.
Can the zoning map be brought up again, please?
Yes, of course.
And Mayor comes, can I, can I ask a question on an earlier thing?
Of course.
That we did, so about the 100. 100 units an acre for the affordable housing overlay. So I know that, that's a huge number. The, the gentleman that called in from Mid Penn. And yes, he was saying that sometimes developments have to go even higher to pencil out. Given the package of other incentives that we're looking to bundle with the 100 per, 100 unit acre overlay. Do we feel good that we're gonna be, that that's gonna be enough? I mean, I know we're having a hard time stomaching that even, but I just want to make sure we don't do that. And then it's like, oh, that's not gonna give us anything, it had to have been 140 or something crazier than that. I just, I wanted to know your thoughts, because I know that it was like an average, that seems to be what's going around the, the area. But is it, is it gonna get us there? I don't think we can handle anymore, I'm not sure if this council can handle anymore, but.
It's true that some, some of the projects we looked at do go over that. And the highest that I looked at in, in this county was at that 140 mark. And that's what we started looking at, well, you know. A 300 square foot studio isn't really the same thing as a, you know, a 1200 square foot, three bedroom apartment. Maybe really small units should count as, as half a unit. And that would resolve some of those upper end density issues. But that was, that was the same idea that we also got the feedback from the Housing Commission that was getting, it was getting too complicated. But I am, I am concerned that, you know, if a really great affordable project came in, you know, at 110 years pregger. And they wanted to use the, the city's program and not, and not the state program for density bonus. It would, it would, it would be a shame, I think, and I think one of, one of the ways to resolve that is to. You know. If not focus on density so much, if, you know, building height, for example, is like the real driver of, of community concern. And council concern about potential buildings that would just look out of place or out of scale with the community. And really, really build that in strongly to the affordable housing overlay program. And then allow, allow for some, you know, flexibility to go, you know, slightly over that. If, for example, you know, in the downtown parking lot, where the, you know, the council's in a partnership to do a project with the developer. And the, the density is coming in a little high, but the units are really efficient and there's good open space. And it, it, it's at, it's at a height that is not threatening. You know, at that point, the density, and I think the signals we're getting from the state is, hey, you know, don't worry about density so much. You know, regulate, have objective standards about everything else. But eventually, you know. This idea of unlimited, you know, not regulating the density in and of itself, but focusing on building heights, floor area ratio. Building modulation, you know, those are the things that people really react to when they experience a, a new building. So yeah, that, that is an issue, but we, the collective judgment was, you know, that's the highest density we see in Menlo Park. And so we, and it was overlapping significantly with the majority of affordable housing projects. But the city, at the end of the day, is going to be in competition with other cities for these same projects.
Are you, yeah, in there, in the, are you seeing other cities? Because other cities are going through this process also, are they looking at affordable housing overlays? Are we, I think we're ahead of most people on this, but do you think they're all gonna end up at 102 or?
Well, I think that there's gonna be some that are in that 75 to 100 to 120 range. But some cities like Palo Alto are just gonna chuck it out and say, forget about density, just, you know, meet, meet our height limit. And so I think. I think it's a, it's a legitimate concern that, you know, 100 years pregger captures mostly affordable housing projects we surveyed. But by definition, we were looking, you know, looking backwards. That projects that were approved or built or under construction. And then going forward, as land costs continue escalate, the, the density might need to creep up incrementally.
So if we, if we find out halfway through that it's not, like in four years into the, to the arena cycle, that it's not doing it. Can we modify it midstream?
Yeah, I, I think it'd be a good idea to take that approach to the whole exercise and have like maybe, you know, two year check-ins.
Okay.
To see what's happening. And making, and making adjustments.
Okay, so we're not, this is not like chaining us to this forever and ever, this was like our best.
Right, but time does go by quickly, it's, it's hard to pause and do these major land use decisions. So I would, if, if, if the council's concerned about losing out on some projects because of the density issue. I, I would consider, you know, giving the team direction to explore that and see if there's a way we could build in some flexibility around that.
I'd be curious to hear what, I, I'm sorry, we went backwards, Mayor. But I'd be curious to hear what my colleagues think, and then my last comment about, it occurred to me, the, there's a speaker. Oh. I apologize. I don't know what I did with my notes, she, she makes lovely comments. Kalisha Webster from Housing Advocates about the developmentally disabled. And are there mechanisms for senior housing and, and, and other housing, special need housing? Where we give extra incentives or something and would now be the time to tell you, I would be interested in that.
Yes.
And is that part of the affordable housing overlay or some other?
That would, that should be part of the overlay, yes.
Okay, okay, thank you.
So that last question made me wonder, should we be going through the Housing Commission's recommendations? And just confirming some of the items there, because both. Making sure that the displacement and also this issue with the seniors and special. Needs groups, special groups was in there. So perhaps would that be beneficial to go through that? And I personally support both those. But, and then the other piece is if we could get some images and perhaps some addresses so people could go by seeing some of these. I don't inherently have a problem with the 100 units, but I don't feel comfortable until I have a better feel for it. And along with those, the height and all, going back to the open space is also very important. And yes, the height can, one can take a higher building with more open space around it. Generally. Thank you.
So before we go through the Housing Commission recommendations, we just have one item left to, to discuss.
Yeah, so, but we, we did need to sort of go back on this issue of the overlay. And whether there was a desire to see, to give the, the staff flexibility to look at something above 100.
So I'm fine with what staff wanted to look at, if we're not committed to it and we can figure out the ramifications of how we massage that when they come back. But I'm, I'm fine with what they wanted to look at with respect to looking at the R3 areas around the downtown, it's fine.
And what about though, the, the, the affordable housing overlay? Like whether we should look at something with a density greater than 100 dwelling units an acre?
Well, that was something that just came up tonight.
Right, right now.
In our discussion, I, I, I think that, I don't think we need to do that right now. I think that can be project dependent as the project comes forward. If, if, so let's say Mid Penn came forward to us and they said, look, we can make this work at 150, they can always do that, right? So I just, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't see the need to do that in this exercise.
I, I think I would be there also in the sense of. If I would feel like we're, we're sort of negotiating with ourselves at, at a certain point. Even though again, I know the end result is more affordable housing units in Menlo Park. And so it's not necessarily a negative, but, but, but yeah, I, I think I would be most comfortable with sticking with. With the staff recommendation of, of 100 dwelling units an acre. Accepting that, 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 that may not be the going rate and we may need to look at, look at that again. Okay, so, and are we all comfortable with that? Okay, so then going back to, someone has to tell me where, where we were. So we were in the part about, about the bullet on, on sort of modifications, this is just the feedback. Yeah, okay, of which he did, and then, and then you took us off, just, just giving him cover. But. But yeah, so if we could bring up the, the zonium up again, and we were gonna be looking at specifically, looking at the C2, C2A. Was that the idea?
Where, I'm looking for it, I'm not finding C2.
There's one C2 in, on San Joe Road. That's surrounded by a bunch of R3AXs. It's a, it's a darker pink.
And this is Ashco, there's a T4 that had these smaller little sections along Willow. You can see them here as well. Those more C2. Up here.
Yeah, of course.
So are we still looking at modifications of the retail commercial zoning districts? And that includes C2s and the C2A or those separate issues?
I, I think that, that, that's where we're at, right, what do you? Yeah, this is, all of the C2s are one issue, like. So that, that's my understanding.
And I'm just gonna come out of the box and say yes. So, because the C2 that's in my district is the Safeway Shopping Center and we discussed it extensively. So my answer to that is yes, I'm, I want that modification.
Yeah, I would, I would just, I mean, the C2s that I see in my district are, are, you know, older storefronts along Willow. That obviously will at some point in the not too distant future likely be redeveloped. And, and I certainly think that, that, that we should do all we can to encourage housing to be a part of that, that, that discussion of Vice Mayor Nash.
Well, I was actually going to make that point, I would actually go as far as saying not just allow, but encourage.
So I think we, you, you've got the feedback there. And then, and then the last item for feedback was amendments to the city's below market ordinance to increase the required inclusionary zoning from 15% to 20%. For projects with 20 or more units. This came up earlier in the, the meeting. It, I think that there is general sentiment or support for going in that direction, do I hear anything otherwise, Vice Mayor Nash?
I would just like to add that if there's some way we could get in there so we don't get luxury units at, you know, 19 luxury units rather than. Units that then qualify for the program.
Um, and then the, the other thing, sort of to clean up here were, there, there were lots of kind of additional sites. That were thrown out, I mean, I have no objection to any of those sites being, being, being considered. And so I'll go to Councilmember Wilson and then Councilmember Mueller.
Sorry, going, going back for a second for the 15 to 20%. Oh, I just forgot what I was gonna say. Oh, the Housing Commission, when they were talking about the 15 to 20%, I think there was some reference to Redwood City. And how they do it. And so I would be interested in checking out that. I don't remember the details of what was great about what they do, but I remember there was something good about it. So you're nodding, so I get the sense that you know what I'm talking about.
I'll check it out.
Thank you.
And to be fair, Mayor Combs, I, if the rest of the council wants to discuss the down zoning issue. I'm not trying to block you all from doing so, it might be that you reached a conclusion on that without me. But like I said, because of the notice issue that I think does exist, I just abstain from it either way. So, but you might, you guys be able, might reach a conclusion without me, so.
All right, and I was, I was just gonna get to that, that issue. I did just want to make sure that, that we were all comfortable with the exploration of the additional sites that were thrown, thrown out. And there's, there's, okay, as, as sites that weren't identified and, and there seems to be general comfort with that. And then there, again, there, okay, there is the issue of. In, in, I haven't, Councilmember Taylor, just to, to check in, and you raise your hands. And so, so I, but, but we're gonna get to the downside, it says an issue. I'm calling on you now in respect to everything we've covered since then. And, and any, anything you want, want to add and make sure that you're, you're comfortable with everything.
I'm comfortable with everything, Mayor Combs. I do have one piece I want to add, which was a part of the request for this meeting. And that's to talk about outreach. So I don't know if we can do that first or we'll do that after the discussion around down zoning.
Let's, let's take it now.
So I am concerned with outreach and I'm not sure if we need to set a benchmark as far as how many residents in Menlo Park. We want to make sure that we reach and have opportunity to participate. But just how things have gone with the recent. But just how things have gone with the recent outreach work done by the C O C. I'm, I'm concerned that not enough of our residents in Millipark are a part of this process. And I'm not sure what we need to do, but we definitely need to do something. I'm con, I'm not concerned about who is in the room in discussion. I'm concerned about who is not. And if we are going to reverse the patterns of discriminatory land use practices, we need to do better. Which is why I wanted to discuss it in this meeting.
Thank you, Councilmember Taylor. And so then I, I think the question is like, how do we approach that issue going forward? Do we, we want to agendize an item? Because again, I know a lot of staff's concern has been about getting this. Direction needed to specifically for the N O P process, right? And so it looks as though, fingers crossed, that we're gonna get that direction now. And so I do think that maybe with some of that pressure being alleviated. There is the ability to turn and, and focus on, on, on the issue of outreach. Again, I, I know a lot of that has been, there, there has been. Lots around the C O C and I know to some extent that that has been. You know, a distraction from, from, from those efforts and, and again, to the extent to which any of that. Falls on me, then I completely accept it. So how do we address this going forward? Do we look to agendizing an item? Where one, we sort of have some. Analysis with regards to the, the C O C issue and then some sense from staff on what the, what specifically is the outreach going forward. Are just staff have another way in which it thinks that we should approach this, this issue?
I'll jump in. I, I think maybe the first step would be to bring back an agendized item for the council. And to talk about C O C and the representatives on C O C. And then in addition, maybe make some key commitments about outreach specifically so that the council has some metrics. And I, I believe we could do that in January.
Right. I, I think that that sounds like a, a fair approach to, to me. Also accepting that I'm, I'm obligating a future mayor to, to prioritize it, but I'm sure that a person. Will prioritize it. And, and then, then yeah, that we can sort of, again, address those two issues. The issues around the, the future of C O C and, and just, just a general sense of like, what does the outreach strategy look like? The outreach strategy looks like going, going forward. Okay, so thank you, Councilmember Taylor, for, for, for raising that, that issue. Now I, I wanted to get to, oh, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor.
I requested staff reach out to current and. I'll leave it up to you whether or not prior C O C members are included, but just to thank them for what they've done and let them know that this will be coming up. Please, thank you.
Yeah, totally supportive of that. Okay, now turning to the issue of, of, of possibly giving the staff direction on. The issue of, of downzoning district, district one, specifically like the, the M two. Councilmember Mueller has raised concerns, given that, that this wasn't specifically agendized. The city attorney is, is, is comfortable with, with us possibly giving some direction here. But where, where are, are you guys all at on this? And so I, I'll say like, I think the, the options are, we have a sort of a vote, a poll. To, to give the staff direction. This would not be obviously a part of the, the motion regarding the recommendation. This would be a, a separate action. So we could have it teed up as a, a separate motion or action to give the staff direction. To either proceed or not. I mean, it would just be a, you, you know, motion and it would either, it would either, you know, pass or fail. We could decide to give the staff direction that this should be. This issue should specifically be agendized in a future meeting. Again, I'm giving a lot of work for the future mayor already. Are we can pursue a, a third course of which is not at this point obvious to me. So, so where, where, where are things at? Vice Mayor Nash.
So I would like to find out from staff whether or not this is something which. Would best be done as part of the housing element, which is where I currently, what I currently believe based on. Limited information. So is this, I would like to explore downzoning District One, which does not mean it's done. It just means that we would explore it and see what it would take. And I believe that that will be something that is. Much better done at this point because there are numbers which hopefully can be absorbed within the housing element. It's not something that, just what would it take? And so I'm comfortable at this stage, just doing a, a very high level look at it. But I think that I personally think that we need to do that.
Um, Councilmember Taylor, did you want to chime in? I see your hand is up.
I, I, Mayor Combs, I left it up. Since this item, it was coming up, but I have specific language, if that would help. To determine whether the council supports this. And that is to direct staff to study the implications, risks and potential procedures for downzoning residential zoning. Within District One from one hundred dwelling units an acre to sixty dwelling units an acre. And from one hundred dwelling units an acre to thirty dwelling units an acre, while upzoning elsewhere in the city to ensure. No net loss of residential intensity.
Um, so, okay, and thank you for that, that, that language, which, which, um. You know, I, I think does a lot to clarify the, the scenario. You know, I'll, I'll chime in. And. You know, I, I just think it's, it's, um, it's, it's a, it, it's, it's gonna be a quagmire. And, and I don't know that at the other end of it, that, that will get. A, a great deal of benefit. And, and I, I think what I see is, is a process that would be. Likely litigated. Because you are, the extent to we can have a discussion of whether those rights are vested or not, those property rights. But. Their value is enough that if they go away. That it's a lawsuit and, and. And it's, it's a, a pretty, pretty significant exposure to, to the city. And, and so, and, and I don't know that it seems to be like, it's a process that, that there is extensive sort of. Case law or even just sort of examples. And, and so in that, that sense, I would be, I, I would be hesitant to. To pursue this direction. Councilmember Wilson. And just before I, if, if it ends up that we're with Councilmember Mueller abstaining. And it, let's, I mean, obviously it could be, it could be three, one, or it could be two, two. What are the, I don't know if the city manager or city attorney, what are the implications of, of, of a two, two? Does, does that just, just die in this situation? Or where, where are we at? And to put more pressure on you, Councilmember Wilson.
Well, I, I don't think we need like a formal motion here. It's, this is direction to staff on whether to. Bring back a more detailed analysis because we have not done. Any risk assessment in great detail. As of yet, and so there's no action before the council, so. I guess I say all that with. That we would like to have a majority of council giving us direction or telling us not to pursue this path. And that would mean us, three of you. Providing a consensus one way or another.
Okay, thanks for that, that, I clarify, clarification, of course, makes, makes a, a lot of sense. Councilmember Wilson.
So right now, in my mind, I'm weighing. I'd really like Councilmember Mueller to have an opportunity to weigh in, but I also know that Councilmember Taylor. Has been looking for this issue to move for years. But if, if we could, so. I guess if it can come back in the next like month. Then I'd, I'd wanna wait for Councilmember Mueller to get to weigh in, but if it's gonna get kicked down the, the road. I don't want it to get kicked on the road. So I don't know, and I'm looking, I mean, really one more meeting of the year. I know that agenda keeps getting added to.
Yeah, this can't be added to.
And then I don't know what the next, what January, I guess, staff, I'm asking, when is the earliest this could come back? So that the entire council can have an opportunity to. To express themselves on this.
Well, I, I think that's a good question and I, I can't answer that right this minute. The, the first meeting would be in January eleventh. And so as an example, if the city attorney's office can do all the work on it, then potentially, and, and they have the capacity to prepare it by January eleventh. Then, then that might be a go. For the staff, I mean, I think we would have to come back to you and say, well, what's your priority? Housing element, I mean, we, we are not staffed to, to do the work that we're doing right now and people are exhausted, so. We'll, we'll just have to take something off the plate and, and that's fine. It wouldn't be the housing element. But you know, and we'll come back with productive recommendations about what we wouldn't be able to do. And, and, and if we're talking about a matter of, you know, a few weeks of delay on some other projects. And that's probably because I, I understand that your point is we don't want this to wander into the summer and, and that's not what I'm proposing.
To be, to be fair, to be fair, if you guys decide to move forward tonight, I will get a chance to wave in it later because you're moving forward with it. So, but. So if you decide not to, then I, then I won't either way, but there'll be, that'll be how it is.
Yeah, and so I mean, obviously it is to, you know, like I said, the options are to like. Give staff direction to agendize this, to see if there is a desire to give staff direction or to give staff direction now, right? And so, and, and so I, I think again, Vice Mayor Nash has expressed support in the idea of giving staff direction to explore. I have expressed hesitation, opposition. And, and obviously, since in theory that sort of quasi motion was made by Councilmember Taylor. I have to assume that she, she is in support of giving staff that, that direction, so. You can say you're supportive of giving staff direction or you can say, hey, let's relook at this and, and you're, you're supportive of giving staff direction to. Agendize it to see if we'll, we'll give staff direction. And, and then, and then we can see if there is, there, there is support for that. Of course, please.
I'm, I'm wondering whether staff believes it's something that's critical to the pathway of the E I R. In other words, is this something that will fit into the, that we need to decide immediately for the E I R? Or sort of that will make it much more difficult?
I think we may need to study a little bit more to know, but potentially.
Yeah, and, and I do, in, in, in fairness, that, that is sort of putting staff on the spot a little bit to, to kind of weigh into.
Okay, so, so City Manager John Robinson, when you were speaking about. The staff capacity that has to do with if we were to give direction to look into these questions. Not about agendizing it, whether we're going to give direction. I guess, I guess what is, what does staff see if we were to move forward with asking some questions about this concept? What does that entail on it from a staff perspective?
So I, I think there could be two versions of that report. One report would say it's sort of a bullet point outline. Give, give staff direction with no, with very limited information, which is not how I heard the motion, right? Risk analysis, et cetera, et cetera. If, and, and so that would be much easier to put together, but I. I would speculate it will be insufficient for the council to make a good decision. The other would be a full-on analysis, and I think that would take a substantial amount of time.
Please.
Through the mayor?
Yeah, of course.
I, I just was gonna offer that I do agree with the city manager on that. I think a full-blown analysis will, will be involved. It will require. Quite a bit of. Participation that's between or collaboration between my office and, and staff and the planning department. The, the ultimate analysis, of course, would have to be wrapped up with a, a full-blown environmental review. And so I think the analysis that the city manager was just referencing was just like, how functionally do we do this? And how, how would we describe for purposes of an E I R? What, what the project looks like and where, you know, where we anticipate the additional. Housing intensity to be placed and what the risks are of, of downzoning.
Thank you, City Attorney Doherty.
I know you're waiting to hear from me. I am, I, just so everyone knows, I've not been brown acted with anybody on this, so I'm thinking about this, yeah.
I, I learned about it, so, Vice Mayor Nash.
So I just, I am very concerned about staff time and the ability to. Finish the housing element and do all the other high priority items that, not even all, any of the high, other high priority items that we have to. On our plate right now. Having said that, I am also concerned that this ship is sailing and that if we don't get it as part of this. Document, which it sounds like we might not be able to anyway, that we've lost the opportunity. Because we, if it will not be able to be absorbed in the number of new units that we are looking at. And we won't be able to use that and it will be really, really difficult then to be able to. Handle the housing elsewhere in the city. And so. I wonder if there is something that we could do to at least find out if it's part, if it needs to be part of the housing element. Or if it's something which could be, in other words, if we could find out something on the timing of it. And whether right now is a time-critical. Point where we really, if we don't make a decision in favor of the. In favor of looking at it and exploring it and possibly getting it into the housing element, which it may be too late already. That we've actually essentially made it a decision not to do it.
Councilmember Mueller.
Yes, so I just wanted to point out, I think part of the difficulty in making the decision right now has, I think part of the difficulty in making a decision right now. Has to do with the fact that there really wasn't even noticed to council that we'd be having this discussion or to staff tonight. And if we didn't have it or having this much difficulty making this decision, there really was no notice at all to the public. And that was my big concern when it came up tonight, when it looked like we were going that way. So, and given the amount of value that's, it's, I mean, it's super complex. It's not, not just value. There's just, it's super complex. That's I think why there's a lot of difficulty of trying to figure out what to do. It goes back to the fact that there just really hasn't been a lot of, of prep work. Or notice or understanding that we'd be talking about it. And so, you know, I'm happy. To my colleagues, like, I'm happy if you guys want to set it at a date with, with the underlying, with, with some notice, the public. They can weigh in and notice to staff so they. notice to staff so they can prepare and have that discussion, then 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 we're then we're prepared to tell staff, yeah, go and embark on this journey. So.
You know, I'll say, Councilmember Mueller, I do, I do hear you. I will say, though, that this is an issue that Councilmember Taylor has brought up several times. And so it wasn't a first impression, and I agree, it I think is a hard and complex decision, and I'm making my decision based on a a sense of of an absence of information about that complexity, but but understanding what the implications could be.
But to be fair, Mayor Combs, when she brought it up, there were not two other council members who indicated to staff to study and prepare it for tonight. And so I think, and I, so while I empathize with that, I do think it's hard, it's a hard position to put staff in to say, well, you didn't prepare for that, because there wasn't direction to do so. If there had been direction to do so with three, and Betsy, you may have voiced that you were sympathetic to that, but if there happened direction to do so with three voices, then it would have been noticed, staff would have worked on it, and there would have been notice tonight to the public to show up. And so that's my difficulty, and I'm not even saying that, again, not getting to the merits of it, I'm just saying the process has been not such that that there was notice given, or staff was even put on notice that we'd be asking them these questions to make this decision.
Right, Vice Mayor Nash.
So just to put it out there, on the staff report from November 16th, on page oh dash two point nine, question number 11, what decisions, including timing and deciding bodies, would be necessary to downzone housing density in the Bayfront? And there is a three quarters of a page answer to that, so it's, there has been some discussion of this. I'm just putting it out there.
Yeah, I'm not disputing that, Councilmember Nash, I'm just saying, we did not clearly, there was not three votes to tell staff to study it for tonight, prepare it.
I I think I'm just gonna sort of there's not, I think, the comfort level to move at this moment on this this item. And so unless someone tells me I can, I'm just gonna remove it, unless there's a desire for for someone to make a very specific motion on it. Because I don't want to put Councilmember Wilson on on the spot in a way, I mean, again, this, we should be, sometimes we have to make decisions, but we should be making them in a sense of where we're comfortable, and and we understand the information, and we have some sense of of the risk. And for different council members, that level is different. And so and and I I think that there are, at least at this instance, two council members that seem uncomfortable with this idea that that they have, you know, the the level of understanding they need to even have like this very generic discussion about it, or even to give any sort of generic direction, so I think we're going, we're 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 just gonna need to set it aside, because because I don't want to put you know, one council member in the position of feeling that 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 she has to sort of be that that deciding vote in a situation of which they're not comfortable with. And and I do, I do think that there is some some unfairness there. So we're going to move on, and this is another item I'm going to leave for the next mayor to deal with. Councilmember Wilson, if you want to.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Combs. I mean, my real preference is to bring it back really soon, so I don't know who to say that. To bring back what you're shaking your head now, I just, I know it's been but I don't understand how staffing, because it's the same conversation, but with with notice, so I don't think it requires really any additional staff time. Or just an agenda.
So again, if if the councils, I mean, I what I'm hearing, though, is that you want to understand what the impacts would be and what the complexity, what the gives and takes are. And that will take substantial time, I think.
Yeah, if I'm hearing, like, Councilmember Mueller's concern is is just notice. So if that is then yours concern, then then, yeah, then we can just throw this as an agenda item on on a future meeting, and there's notice, and there's no no staff report, and we can just have this discussion without any real facts or information, but there has been notice. But if the idea is that, like, you need more facts, you need more information, then then that is that is some commitment of of staff time.
I think I need more notice, I think there's a lot of information we're digesting tonight. And yes, it was in the councilmember question memo thing, and I greatly appreciate it. But like the what, like, the thing that councilmember Taylor said of going from 160 or 130, like, just even that was like, gave me a picture or 150, somebody said. So even like what it is, we're like talking about. But I don't want it to fall through the cracks and not come back really, really soon. So I don't know if there's a way to make an ask that get on an agenda soon.
My biggest concern is that we're missing the boat if it's not as part of the housing element, although I'm not sure how to get us there.
Yeah, so I mean, Jeff or Deanna, I mean, is is there any? Yeah, I mean, is there any answer to that? I mean, how would that change the NOP? If it went one way or the other, or not?
May I? Going off, going off the the recommendation from councilmember Taylor to study reducing the maximum density in the Bayfront from 100 units breaker to 60 units breaker, and then also, what I understood, a second option down to 30 units breaker would mean we'd have to show a corresponding abzone elsewhere for 520 units in the first case, and 910 units in the second case. So in simplistic terms, the council could put that number on top of the 4,000 number that we're, we've, we've suggested that you give us the green light on, and that from a environmental perspective, that would give us the room to cover that that those two alternatives.
I have an idea. Because environmental impact reports have alternatives that get studied, right? Would this potentially, could this be an alternative that's studied, and then we can figure it out as we go along, but you're not missing an EIR window?
My only concern that, though, the the housing element is just one part of this. The other is the complexity of this process, which is not exclusively contained in the the housing element. I mean, there is a specific process for for downzoning one part of your city and then upsoning another part of the city. And then there is also the analysis of of the property interests that have been created already. And so that's also another like like analysis, and so I mean, so in theory, this going to to 5,000 provides you some cover of of one aspect of the implications here. But but there's other two other key factors of which remain opaque.
Totally, I think, at least that way, it doesn't close the door, but it doesn't guarantee it, it's just reserving a discussion about it, but that we're not missing a boat, I guess, I'm trying to have it both ways, and I don't know if that's kosher. I'm just trying to think how to get through this.
Won't we have to now sit then and find opportunity sites for that increased density? Because we can't just say, well, study it for 1,000, but we for whatever, whatever number of thousand more units need to be reallocated for the IR, we have to allocate them to some portion of the town.
Yeah, I think that that would be my understanding, right, that it's it's not that you could just throw additional 1,000 units on there, but that you actually have to provide homes for them in a sense, right? You have to associate them to some extent, but your understanding of certain parcels or certain overlays. And so that that's essentially going back in and in finding it in the sites that you have already been identified, or then or or in the new sites that we've suggested, then sort of definitely being behind the eight ball and and trying to, you know, make sure that you can pull out an additional 1,000 units, which I do think would be a little bit of a challenge, because again, we threw out some sites, but it's likely that once staff and the consultant goes back, then that there's I doubt that that we threw out any site that hadn't been looked at in some way.
I can only think of two sites, I'm sorry, customer national, I interrupted you. I can only think of, like, USGS site was was not fully maxed out, right? Like, there are, there are a few sites that you could say, well, we take it and we put it there, but I don't, but again, like, I just think was there sufficient notice that we were going to do that? I mean, within, if if there was, then fine, but I just I, I mean, if that's something you guys are open to, to taking that density and putting it at the USGS site or the EIR, how many units is that?
Yeah, no, please go.
I actually had a conversation, well, basically, this is sort of separate from that, but on the same topic, and that's in the report, we're looking and only at putting a small number of housing units on USGS. And it occurred to me, separate from this, that I would like to see USGS fully housing in the EIR, to just throw it out there right now, no one owns it, it's going up for sale. Why not put it, and, you know, essentially fully housing, we can always pull back from that, but then it's been studied. The idea being that we can still add, you know, we probably would want to have some retail there or some sort of something serving the community, we might want to continue childcare there. There's various, you know, not 100%, but what about studying that at a larger, at more than just, I think, two acres right now is being studied for housing. To me, that seems like a tremendous opportunity to put in more housing. Again, this was, I had meant to bring this up before this other conversation to what else would we put there? Would we get more offices, which then generates more jobs? How do we want to use that space? And this is probably a whole discussion, I don't know if this is the right opportunity. But I'd like to see more housing studied there regardless.
My, and I can correct me if I'm wrong, because I'm looking at our folks who are much more more knowledgeable in city planning, but my impression is that if we embark upon this course, I'm not saying we should or shouldn't, just that if we do, the second alternative of taking that density away at two different levels and moving it to a different part of the city is going to be a much more complex EIR, because the baseline traffic is going to change, is going to change before you add the traffic supply cells. And so you're going to see, and not only are we doing it, but we're doing it at a place where I think within our last EIRs, when we did this, it was presumed that a lot of that traffic generated from that density was going to be going to employer right there, so it's going to be traveling throughout that through Willow and all of those places to get down to Facebook. Because I'm pretty sure there were assumptions built within the EIR when we did the density at the level that we did, that you're talking about downzoning, that that was workforce housing. And so that second EIR is going to be, especially at two different density levels, I'm assuming that there's a transportation element to the EIR, right? It's going to be very complex, much more, I think it's going to be much more complex than just the underlying housing element, EIR, which takes your baseline and then just adds density to different places, because they're going to have to do, they're going to have to create new baseline assumptions, and you guys can tell me if I'm wrong, but I'm pretty certain.
So I was actually talking about having the USGS as part of the baseline EIR.
No, but what I mean is that because the, so the first EIR, so you're saying in the first one, do USGS, right? But if we're going to do, and if we're going to do, if you're going to do an EIR, if you're going to do the second EIR that says we're downzoning by this much and adding to the other, then you, then your baseline completely changes, and not only, not once, but twice, and your circulation, the circulation completely changes. And candidly, I think it gets worse, because all of that traffic is going down Willow to get to Facebook, because the assumption that that was workforce housing was to begin with. So I only raise that issue because I think I just within the context of trying to get the housing element done, we are, I think, not tripling the work. I think we're adding significantly more work to the EIR.
I am would like clarification, whether you're talking about your, you do not want to, there's two different pieces. One is the second piece of the EIR. And right now, I'm trying to put that one aside just for something that I forgot to bring up before, which was whether we want to look at more housing on the USGS site. And then there's, and then once we decide that piece, then yes, there's the other pieces to, do we want to see whether that can absorb the downzoning, but I actually was trying to separate the two.
But the issue is, so let's say that we say we're going to just add density to USGS, which I'm fine, I mean, I'm I'm open to listening to everyone talk about that. But that would mean because of the 4,000 units, intensity would change somewhere else. Right? And so the only, because we're, we've allocated 4,000 units, so if we're going to add the USGS, intensity drops somewhere else. Regardless, after we get done doing that, we fill that intensity back up by through the downzoning. So whether we do it at USGS or somewhere else, it's still the baseline for the second, the second EIR with the two alternatives changing.
So I guess I'm looking to planning staff, because my understanding is if we don't study it, it won't happen. And my concern is just that we're locking ourselves into a USGS that does not have a lot of housing, or that it goes through, I guess, that we go through another EIR, but at this point, I believe the USGS has only 30 units, if I'm looking at the right, nope. It has like 30 units and 60 units, here we go. I'm sorry, it has 60 units of market rate development housing period on 5.7 acres or is maximum affordable units, it has 200. That seems, again, putting aside what we're talking about with District One, it seems like that's a really low number, and I am concerned that we don't lock ourselves in to minimal housing on that site.
I think that the the market probably won't allow for the those housing numbers on that site. Just if you, if you, if you think of like, what it's, what the acquisition costs are going to be.
But won't the, won't the zoning and won't the zoning dictate the market cost to some extent? So if we indicate now that it's going to be housing, and that's what the city is looking for, or predominantly housing, won't that, isn't this the best time to be doing that? Because we don't, as far as I know, no buyers have come forward yet, so now is the time to actually be signaling that that is considered a good place for housing.
I think anyone who's like in, who's who's sort of kicked the tires on that would understand that that housing is going to be a key component to what what goes there. I don't necessarily I think, you know, we can throw out some numbers there, and and they'll look at that as informative. But I don't necessarily think it it sort of, it, like I said, I think that the the market would dictate something with more units than than that on that that site.
I'm not sure, because it's 36 units, I think they'd probably target townhomes. And so townhomes, one, the townhomes are wood construction, two, they had two on a wall, and it's, you know, that's millions of dollars in sale. So unless someone was coming through and they wanted to put, they wanted to put apartments on it at density, but I, we can exclude the fact that there may be a townhome development.
But I, we can exclude the fact that there may be a townhome developer who comes in and wants to go there. But I would defer, I mean, I'm, Councilor Nash, I'm open to it, like, I'm, I'm open to that, but, but I do think that in the paradigm that we're talking about now, that means that we're, you know, if we're doing that at the 4,000, we're either reducing density other places or in other places, whether that be, you know, in District One or other places, right? But, or, or we're reducing density in District Run, adding it to, adding it to USGS and then leaving the rest of the EIR the same. But it's kind of, I mean, now we're adding multiple, I think we just added a fourth alternative where we're saying increased USGS and downzone and leave D1.
Councilmember Wilson.
So, so there's a lot of conversation happening here, and part of me just wants to go take a break outside and get a fresh air. So USGS, I mean, it's a, to me, it's a great opportunity site for housing. That being said, I am feeling like we still need to keep our eye on some distribution of impact citywide. And it's starting to feel very, which it should feel very concentrated during, in your downtown and your transit. But one thing I just want to flag for next week is when we start talking about SB9. And, you know, it's interesting, because when we're talking about the impact of density in these big buildings and everything, and we all kind of want more like gradual dense, like, we probably would all prefer like smaller things. I want to be open to, you know, not, not shunning some of these missing middle citywide policies where everyone in the city is seeing some gradual increase. And so I just want to take this as an opportunity to say, I'm not against adding density to USGS, but I don't want it to be a pass for the rest of the city to say, well, it's not here. In terms of this down zoning of District One, I totally get that there are extremely complex issues that would be at play here. Of, I don't know if it's like people and their property rights and the EIR and the location and whatever. I think this is, we're looking at just getting some more information about whether this is even like possible and feasible. So as this discussion is going on, I, I, like, for me, it's almost like a hurdle thing, like, I don't, again, I think I asked this a few hours ago, when this first came up, like, what's the order of magnitude where we'd even be talking about here? And, and like, it sounded like a few hours ago, it could even potentially be absorbed within the, the 4,000 units. So if that answer can, if that question, that's the question I'm interested in getting answered now. So I, I would be in support of answering that question to Councilmember Taylor's, you know, specific, like a bigger motion about a giant report being written. I'm not, I'm not there yet. So I'm like halfway, I think. I just, I would like a little more information. So I think I'm going back to actually making kind of a, an opinion about the down zoning District One. And if, if staff can do some incremental analysis, I don't know if that's possible, but, but that would be my preference. So that's all I have to say.
Yes, who, please.
Staff and consultants, I think would benefit from direction to further explore the question of how much of any potential down zoning could be accommodated within that number that's already been identified, requested to study in the project description and the EIR. Will require some legal thinking from the city attorney's office. But that is, that is something that we're not 100% confident of coming down one side or the other. Which is why I asked for the, sort of the add-on approach, but now I realize the legitimate complications that that implies. But there is, there is a chance, I just don't know exactly where it's going to land of how, how it could possibly fit into the, the numbers already established. So I, I think that would be a good use of, of, at least the, like, the, the, the planning, planning time. I personally would, you know, feel committed to seeing this issue through. This is one of the reasons why we are highly interested in, in Menlo Park's housing element, because we knew the history at the Bayfront and, and some of the community work that had been done around that. And my understanding was always that, at some point, the, the city would, was going to address that. And so I'm, I'm happy to do, from M Group's point of view, whatever it takes to make sure everything stays on track relative to the housing element and the EIR, to at least have these discussions and get some of these basic questions answered.
So if I can chime in too, I don't want, I, I don't know exactly like what Councilmember Wilson means when she says incremental analysis, but I also don't know if she completely knows, but, yes, and so my, my question is that, like, whatever you think it is, how much work is that? When can you deliver something back to council? And isn't, I think it's, you know, worth pointing out, is this a part of what you would consider your scope of work that we are already paying for, or would you consider it additive?
It's definitely not in our scope of work, but in hindsight, it should have been. And so I'm willing to, I'm willing to absorb it. I think the real question is, a lot of our work will be asking questions of the city attorney. So a lot, a lot of it's going to, going to fall on the city attorney's office.
And so when do you and the city attorney think that you can come back with something? And, and I, I appreciate that we, we haven't even clarified that we have support from three council members on this, but assuming we do, when can you, when can you come back with something? Because what, what I've heard is a desire to get something.
I'm going to look to the attorney in the sky there.
In my bedroom. I certainly not next week.
Don't worry, I, I wasn't going to put you on the agenda for next week.
Okay.
I'll take that one.
I think January 11th is a possibility. But I think that there's going to be a lot of coordination between my office and Jeff's office and staff on how best to propose this kind of implementation. I think the, the pure risk analysis is, is a bit simpler than, than what I think we're looking at as a full analysis. So I would say a month, maybe.
City manager, Jerome Robinson.
So I'm going to repeat some advice that the city attorney is giving me pretty consistently these days, and that is, in a word, she didn't put it this way, but don't overpromise. So how about if we commit to the second meeting in January, give it our best effort, and no later than the first meeting in February? Because what we don't want to do is issue this report on Friday before the council meeting.
Okay, so, so let's see, so I would ask you to, even before we get to the substance of what we're, the direction given, ask you, Councilmember Wilson, to make a motion to that effect and to see, and to see if you get a second and to see if you can get three votes on it.
So I'm going to ask Mr. Bradley to repeat what it is you think I'm, what, where we landed, and then make a motion on that. If that's okay with you, to put you on the spot, Mr. Bradley, but my brain is frying and you seem to be following along my brain.
No, yeah, no problem. We're here to support the council in your deliberations. My recommended motion would be to direct staff to research and analyze the process to effectuate a, a, a down zoning and a corresponding up zoning consistent with SB 330 requirements and how that would affect the total planning target for new housing in the housing element. Period. Having said all that, we do need to get the NOP out this month. And so I may have, I may have backed myself into a corner here. That, that probably shouldn't be part of the motion.
Okay. So are you still thinking this is viable? I mean, is it still?
I, I think.
No boat is launching before?
I think conceptually, it could be, it could be fairly straightforward, but.
And you can give us, you can check in if it's like way more than you think you're fighting off.
I'm, I'm just concerned about the timelines of returning to council on this item, if, if, if we're assuming that, and it sounds like we are, if we're assuming that the NOP can't be issued until all these questions are answered, because it affects our, our total envelope.
I, I think I, I didn't make, you're making an assumption I didn't make, and so we were still going to go back to the recommendations, which include like the 4,000, right? And so, and so that will still be on the table. So, so my assumption is that your analysis will play into being able to account for that additional housing unit within the 4,000. The, because, yeah, like, to do it any other way would either be to ask the council to go with a higher number, 5,000, or would be asking to delay the NOP process. Certainly, I think delay is, is for me certainly not an option. And if there's a desire for, for 5,000, someone can make that motion, I'm, and we can have that vote, I'm going to be a nay on it. So, but, but maybe there is support on that, but, but, but I definitely think the delay regarding the NOP process is, is really not an option.
For, for me, this is really rewinding the meeting a few hours, when I was asking about the magnitude and whether it could be absorbed and fact checking if that is really a thing. And I also want to make it clear to any member of the public or stakeholders in the development community that this is like thinking about looking at the possibility of maybe doing something. So this is like not, there's nothing happening and you can talk to us. This is like getting information about something that has been an ongoing issue in Menlo Park since the passage of Connect Menlo, I think. So it's just being curious about what the possibilities are. So I, I don't want anyone to go away thinking that a decision's been made, or that this is a signal that this is going to happen, but this is not precluding something, but being open to the possibility. So with that being said, I will move the direction that Mr. Bradley outlined. Thank you.
Is, is there a second?
So I will give Councilmember Taylor a chance to second before I do, but otherwise I will. Thank you.
Your hand's not up, and then, and then, then I look and it's up, and I.
I'll second, thank you.
Okay, we got it first and second, so you can.
Thank you. So I have a motion on the floor by City Councilmember Wilson and a second by City Councilmember Taylor to direct staff to research and analyze the process to effectuated down zoning and corresponding upzoning consistent with SB 330 requirements and effects to the planning target for the new housing in the housing element, period.
I was just wondering if the city attorney wanted to weigh in at all, if that is a little bit too just if, if, if we should soften the to affect a down zoning, in other words, to look at the, should we put any hedge words in there, essentially?
No, I, I, I'm comfortable with the motion. The motion that Mr. Bradley stated is effectively the same as the one that Councilmember Taylor had earlier referenced. She just also referenced a reduction and the, the precise reduction in base and bonus density in District One. Which, which is precisely what we will be looking at anyway.
Okay, so I think we're good to, to go to the vote. Mr. Bradley, did you want to add something?
I'm just mechanically, if we're able to do that analysis quickly, and the, the answer is yes, everything could fit within the housing element envelope that's been identified, can we move forward and issue the NOP? And maybe that's the next thing you're going to do.
Well, well, let's, let's see how this vote goes, and then, and then we'll, we'll go from there.
So any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none, by roll call vote, City Councilmember Mueller.
When I'm staying, I don't think there was this notice that we'd be directing or having this discussion this evening on this topic.
Thank you. City Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
City Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nash?
Yes.
Mayor Combs?
No.
And so the motion passes with Mayor Combs dissenting and City Councilmember Mueller abstaining.
Thank you, City for Karen. Okay, so now, now moving on to the, the, the main event, and, and so, so is it the idea that we should hold off on the NOP process until this issue is, is resolved? Or should we, you know, again, my preference in vote is to continue on the path with recommendations as outlined in the staff report, and that is like the 4,000 units. So, but I'll, so, so I'll, I'll let there be some comment, and then I'll, I'll, I'll just make a motion. And we'll see where that, that goes. Councilmember Mueller.
I'm, unless staff wants to correct me, I was under these, I was under the belief that if we didn't move forward with the NOP tonight, we weren't going to get it done. And I think, given the ramifications of that, I would want us to move forward, because the ramifications are severe.
Okay, do you want?
Are we closing any doors if we do not, with what we're doing with USGS? If we do not look at more housing? And to Councilmember Wilson, I realize that we don't want to concentrate all the housing in any one area, but it's, it's probably going to be housing or office or commercial, so it's a choice. It's not, you, obviously, it's not open space versus housing or something like that. And so I just am wondering, are we in any way closing any doors? Is there anything that we should be doing? And perhaps this is a conversation outside of this meeting to just, are we, should we be doing anything with USGS at this point to be proactive?
So we have been in communications with USGS to, to just understand when and the, and the timing of their sale and bid of the, the property. I, I think there is probably potential additional opportunities for USGS, whether that happens as part of the housing element or as part of a subsequent rezoning, or, you know, when a project comes in, you know, that is certainly another opportunity to evaluate USGS when there is a project. But if there's an interest in, in studying additional housing, that is something that we can take into consideration here this evening, as long as, I think, some of the other guidance that we received for potentially other sites. I might add that, that might increase the, the number slightly, if you want to give us a little bit of flexibility as we kind of take and absorb what we've heard this evening and see what, what makes, what, what number should be studied, but if, like, if there's a little bit of a flexibility, like an additional 100 units, or.
We, I just would like to be in, having the council be proactive in what we are going to get in at USGS as opposed to just waiting to see what project is proposed there, so that we have, we have a great need for housing. It's at an ideal location. There may be other uses that we want. It may be something that we need to go out to the community. It's at an ideal location. There may be other uses that we want. It may be something that we need to go out to the community for. I just, I don't know what the correct process is, but I, I want to make sure that we're taking advantage of the time now, if, if there's something that we should be doing to drive this in a direction that we're more interested in. Thank you.
Regarding USGS, so in the absence of adding dense, adding density to USGS for housing right now, how do you anticipate that being zoned? Cause are we, cause you're going to zone, because would that be zoned mixed use or, or?
And I'm actually not talking about, I'm just talking about looking at, at the base level density or something. Right now, we're only looking at two of the 5.7 acres. So I was just thinking of looking at the entire 5.7 acres. I'm not trying to get any higher density than would be at base level.
You know, I would point out that on that, that site, there is a relatively new office structure. You, you know, what encompasses some percentage of it, certainly not the majority.
Yeah. My understanding is there may be a desire to keep some of the exist, the newer existing office buildings. And so maybe, maybe there's some distance between two and the maximum, but.
And this is my understanding is we can zone it whatever we want. They don't have to tear down the building. It's just whenever they do decide to rebuild and redevelop the property, they would have some constraints, which again, they could come to council and request some other zoning, but at least we'd have put in our desires.
Yeah. But the issue is if they don't build it within eight years, it doesn't number wouldn't count. If it's not feasibly built in eight years, number wouldn't count for.
I'm not trying to get it into the housing element. I'm just trying to have some, being proactive about the.
But then we don't need to do it for the housing element. We can rezonate it anytime.
But the issue is if we rezoned it at any time, then the bill, then the buyer comes forward with a proposal as opposed to the city driving the process and saying that we'd like housing. So this is truly not trying to get more housing for the housing element. It's really trying to take control of our fate.
I'm confused. So if the, the owner is going to buy the property, knowing that there's an office building on there and that only two acres of it could be dedicated to housing. If within the housing element, which we're doing right now, we allocate two acres and it's 36 units. Because that, when the owner buys it, they're going to know they can develop those two acres, but they're probably not going to touch the office building because it has a 30 year lifespan. So how would us zoning it for more housing, which we wouldn't get credit for in the housing element, change the lifetime of that office building?
Because at this point, office, just, we don't know what the pandemic is holding. We don't know what the buyer will want. And it's just, it may be unnecessary, but it seems that at least then we're providing upfront information to someone who's buying the property and we have the ability to steer a project. And I guess I should look at the planning folks for actual professional advice.
Thanks. So I think the way to, to look at this chart, I think they're sort of the, the site acreage, just to clarify, USGS is larger than five acres. I believe it's approximately 17 acres. So the, the five acres is, is a smaller carve out portion of the, the larger building taken into consideration, some of the comments that were here today, there, there is an existing building and newer building. Is that seen as, you know, an underutilized or, you know, opportunity for redevelopment, probably not. And so realistically, looking at a smaller portion of the, the 15, excuse me, the 17 acres, the two acre carve out is kind of this hypothetical of like, we're like knowing what are sort of the characteristics for developing affordable housing. That's where the, sort of the two acre carve outs were kind of used to identify, how could we achieve our affordable housing numbers with these two acre carve outs if it was a larger site? So I think we would be exploring potentially the, the higher five acres as part of that overall 3,700 housing units to be studied. So it wouldn't be limited, I don't, I don't think to the two acres, but potentially not the full 17, but it could be the, the five, or it could be something higher than 30 dwelling units to the acre. As well.
Councilmember Mueller.
Yeah. Is it possible that you could do something with the USGS site? I don't know if you could do it in the housing element, but you'd say, look, it's this density because it's 17 acre site, right? And we're saying two acres for housing plus whatever the acreage is for that office building. Say you get this much housing acreage, but if you give us eight acres for school, you get this much at this density. Is that something that can happen within the housing element? I, I look at the USGS site, it's right across from the high school. It's like the perfect place for a school. And it's a huge site. And so I'm trying to figure out, and I know the school district's looking for sites. So I'm trying to figure out if there's anything that we can do. Originally, when I heard about the SRI campus, I was thinking, wouldn't it be great if part of the, part of the land from SRI was merged with part of the land from USGS and we could get a school out of it, plus the developments? So I'm just, is there anything we can do to try to, to try to? I, I know it might be wishful thinking, but I have to ask.
Sure. Good question. I might ask the city attorney of what, what, what might be feasible in that respect in terms of.
My concern is, are, are we trying to put sort of the cart before the horse? Obviously the housing element is this comprehensive plan. I, I mean, whatever happens with USGS, that will be an ongoing dialogue and discussion between the city and the owners of that property. I can promise you, Vice Mayor Nash, as soon as there is a person or entity who, who owns that, you will be probably one of the first calls that they make after their check is cleared. And, and so I don't see this as like it sort of, you know, sneaking under the radar and, and it not sort of emerging as a, a project that we would like, because I see whatever the housing element says, I see that as being, whatever comes there will be the, at the end of a, a long, very bespoke engagement between, between the, the owners of that property and the, and the city. I'm, I'm going to go with Councilmember Woolson.
We actually have a quick question for Ms. Chow. Is there news on when USGS is going to auction? It sounds like you might have information because I know a lot of people want to know.
I hear soon. I don't know. I don't, I'd have to check to see the latest. I know we've been.
Okay. We've heard soon for a long time. I know a lot of people are waiting to hear that. And then is the two acres, so I, I get it's two acres because that's kind of the desired size of an affordable housing that, that you met with developers. They told you, you know, like one to two acres is ideal. So was the intention that it would have potentially both an affordable standalone housing thing and then also potentially like market rate with inclusionary or some like mixed use thing? Like what? Was there like a? Was there like a vision like that? Or I think Vice Mayor Nash is trying to send a signal to the market that we want housing. And maybe we just say that attention, we want housing. But I'm just curious that, yeah, and a school, a school would be awesome.
But, but that would be the, that would be the trick, right? The trick would be not to give it away for free. And so the trick would be to say, okay, we're going to zone it. We managed to achieve our 4,000 in the housing element. We're going to only allocate 36 to USGS site, but we're going to tell the market, we have appetite for a lot more if you make us a deal. So.
I, I will point out, there is a school already on the side. So a daycare. Yeah, I, I, I guess, you know, I don't, I don't know where we go from there. Vice Mayor Nash, is there something you want to add?
I just, I'm wondering, when is an appropriate time to rezone a property? Is it before someone buys it or in, given this is, this is currently a public facility and presumably will not be a public facility, although maybe a school is, actually I believe a school is. So perhaps it would remain part public facility, but how much control can we have? What is appropriate? What, what is standard in a situation like this?
For the, for purposes of general plan, planning, local jurisdictions are encouraged to broadly account for the needs of the school districts in the community by designating non-specific area wide locations on maps where future schools are needed. So as to not create an inverse condemnation situation where a property owner feels like their, their property has been targeted for a future school site. And then that has implications for property values and property rights. And so that's kind of the, that's the kind of planning 101 perspective.
But if, and I, I do, I'm going to make, make a motion, but, but just specifically on, on this situation, since the parcel of the property is, is zoned like public facility, specifically in relation to its ownership by the federal government, right? And so obviously the minute it is not owned by the federal government, that, that doesn't apply. So could a private owner even occupy that office building unless they went and got the appropriate sort of occupancy like?
So it hasn't, actually the, the government hasn't sold it yet. And so if we zoned half of it now for a school site, what's the, would there be an issue? Why couldn't, why couldn't we go ahead and put on the general? But what, it's federal property and we can't, but why couldn't we put on the map now that would, that could, could we put on the map now that in this general area, we have, we have plans for a school site? Or the need for a school?
You could argue that the, the federal government is exempt from local regulation. And so they could ignore the designation.
But the market couldn't.
Right.
But the market could. So when the federal government went to sell it, the market would take into the account that the city was looking at this as a potential site for a school.
And could the federal government have some action against us? Cause we, we have, you're, you're looking for the attorney in the sky. We, we have taken and devalued immensely their, their, their property.
Like it would be taking claim or something? Those don't usually hold up. That's to discretionary zoning decisions and other legislative zoning type decisions of public entities.
Okay. So I'm, if I'm going to make my motion and, and then if, if you guys want to return to giving some direction on USGS, I'm, I'm fine and open with that, but I do want to give, I want to get, get to the item. And then, and then we can, we can see if, if what the appetite is. So, so I'm going to move that, make a motion that, that the council accepts the recommendations outlined in the, in the staff report. You know, specifically as, as outlined in the bullets, rezoning for approximately 3,700 housing units, upzone sites within El Camino Real Downtown specific plan as outlined in, in the staff report. Modifications though for housing overlay, overlay as outlined in the staff report and removal of 10,000 square feet minimum lot requirement for our three properties located around the downtown as outlined in, in the staff report. And also that as part of, do, do you need the feedback as part of the motion or did you get the informal sense that you need on, on that?
I think we have the, the feedback that we need.
On that. Okay. So then I'll, I'll, in my, my, my motion there. And that's my motion.
And if I may clarify, it's the 3,700 for the rezoning, but overall it would be the 4,000.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Nash, and, and, and that, that, that staff has made note of all of the additional sites that, that have been, that have been identified.
So thank you for that. And then also I would like some sort of memo that outlines the hundred dwelling units per acre and also some website images around town, something where we can get some, a better feel for what that looks like. And then I was also wondering if we could add that we agree with the Housing Commission recommendations on page 15, some of which we've already discussed here and, and suggested. 15 and 16.
Generally, what's, what's staff's, does staff has any concerns about any of the recommendations from the Housing Commission?
Thank you. I'm just going to pull up pages 15 and 16 if you give us one moment, please.
And again, as, as Vice Mayor Nash said, some of it is already covered, but, but obviously some, some is, is not. Councilmember Woolson.
Right. And then at this point, you would be developing or pursuing these recommendations and policies and it would come back to us for final approval. So we're not endorsing these outright. We're just saying, we're nodding, we're, we're, we're moving with them, but we'll be given another chance.
Well, can I ask that, that actually not be a part of the motion and that we make a separate motion on, on this, that, that we keep this sort of clean to the, the recommendations? And, and then, and then I, I think I'm generally supportive of, of, of that, but, but I would prefer to have it, have it clean, Vice Mayor Nash.
I was actually going to say, I'm fine if it's not even a motion and we just give the indication that we're supported. And, and these are items for staff to further explore. Some of these may come back as programs in the housing element itself. And so there would be no additional work at, at this time, but it would represent work for our planning period. And then the, the. Okay.
Councilmember Mueller.
Would you prefer my school motion to be separate?
Yes.
You got it.
So, okay. So then I'm, I'm looking for a second. Okay. But Vice Mayor Nash, sure. Well, Councilmember Mueller has a second. And so I'll, I'll turn it over to the, to the city. And I'm going to look for Councilmember Taylor's hand. I do not see, okay.
Okay. So I have a motion on the floor by Mayor Combs and a second by City Council Mueller to accept rezone for approximately 3,700 housing units that are geographically dispersed throughout the city, primarily in city council districts two to five. These units would be in addition to the projects that are considered in the pipeline, a majority which are located in District One, which are a combination of projects recently approved but not yet constructed. Project under construction, but anticipated to not be completed before June 30th of 2022 and projects under review. There are approximately 36, well, 3,650 pipeline units. densities would allow at least 30 dwelling units per acre and may increase as part of additional site refinement. Secondly, upzone sites within the ECR downtown specific plan to allow 30 DU slash AC at the base level density and potential increases to the maximum bonus level density. The intent is to remove the existing residential cap of 680 units to allow for greater development potential in this specific plan area. Three modifications to the affordable housing overlay to allow up to 100 DU AC for 100% affordable housing developments and/or increase the density bonus for both affordable and mixed income projects and removal of the 10,000 square foot minimum lot size requirements for our three properties located around downtown, which would allow all sites up to 30 DU AC. Any further city council question or discussion?
So this will actually be coming to the Planning Commission as an NOP. So the public will get an opportunity to weigh in on these decisions. Is that correct?
So the items here tonight will be part of an NOP that is intended to be issued before the holidays. And so the NOP will then be brought forward as part of the scoping session of the EIR before the Planning Commission in January.
And at that point, there will be, yes.
Opportunity for.
And if for any reason, the I still have concern after reading the memo, seeing the images, whatever, or anyone else does, there is a chance at that point to give more feedback, but this allows you to go ahead.
It, right. We'll be moving forward. And, and I guess the one thing I just wanted to clarify is part of the motion, if I may, again, just up to, up to the 4,000 units. And this is really for studying purpose. And and I guess, the one thing I just wanted to clarify is part of the motion, if I may, again, just up to the four thousand units, and this is really for studying purposes. To initiate the notice of preparation. So to, I think to an earlier point was, nothing's being rezoned today, nothing is being set, but for studying, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may. I just want to make sure that we Andrew, we we understand what Vice Mayor Mash is, Nash is referring to with the. Hundred unit memo, and I think what you're referring to is the different types of density bonuses that could occur. In that analysis.
Thank you very much. Yes. What are the, well, what are the different density types that can be? Used. In the area. So basically, what is the maximum? I don't want to find out that we set a hundred, and then there's another density bonus that can be layered on top of that. So we actually are approving more than we're thinking that we are. And I also want to have. I've not seen any images. Well, the images that I pulled up on the, from the internet were concerning at a hundred. Dwelling units per acre. I do understand that that's really as necessary to get the affordable housing, but I would like to just. That information and some images and an opportunity also for the how the public. To see this. Thank you.
Any further city council question or discussion?
Yeah, so in the absence of direction around the alternatives. To be studied in the EIR, is that something that you'll be discussing with the Planning Commission? Or how does that get determined, what the alternatives to be studied are?
Typically, the alternatives are recommended by the EIR consultant, who is a a sub consultant to M Group. And alternatives have to meet certain requirements. They, you know, they have to reduce impacts or eliminate impacts from the project. So typically. For a project like this, the alternatives would involve. Different levels of development that still met the overall project objectives. And so it's kind of an art and a science to develop the alternatives. But we'll, we'll take all the public input and all the council input, Plan Commission and Housing Commission and. Try to develop some meaningful alternatives that can help inform the decision making.
Any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none, by roll call vote, City Councilmember Mueller.
Yes.
City Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
City Councilmember Woolison.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nash.
Yes.
Mayor Combs.
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Okay, now I'm gonna acknowledge Councilmember Mueller.
Yes, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that included within staff work that there be an analysis. Of, as the USGS site currently is only setting aside two of its acres for thirty six. Housing units, that ten acres of the site be set aside, what it would take to set aside ten acres of the site for a middle school. The, the per current lead standards within the state of California, the maximum acreage for a middle school is ten acres. So, and it's simply asking them to study how it could be done, but it's also letting the market know. We're interested throughout this housing element part process, we have heard from our school district repeatedly telling us that there is a a lack of land. And tremendous concern voiced over that. And and the discussion tonight, it came out that we may may actually have an opportunity to find land for the district. So I I don't know how feasible it is, but. Everything has a lifespan, right? And so it could be that when it comes time to tear things down. The school, that since we've set it aside and put it within our planning documents, that would be the time for the inverse condemnation.
I just have to say, though, talk about something that wasn't on the agenda.
I'm not letting this opportunity pass, just not.
Well, then I feel better about weighing in about the the down zoning thing.
Who's doing this work? I just want to ask. So so we do have, we we do have a motion on the table.
Is this like legal to do?
I I don't know.
I think it's awesome. I mean, I know Eric Burmeister is gonna be jumping for joy right now. I'm just, I mean, it sounds like a fantasy. I just.
So I'm not worried about, because we're not affecting anyone. No one's gonna sue us. Right? If you guys told me if there was an opportunity, someone's gonna sue us, I'd be worried about notice and all of that. No, I don't think anyone's gonna sue us over this. And so because of that, I just like staff, let's go for it. Like, let's go ahead and start to prepare it. And the sooner that we can give the market notice that we're considering about putting that on this land, that it's under consideration, the better. So, and I think honestly, this, I've talked with school district board members about this site before, like, gosh, wouldn't it, like, it was like a pipe dream. Wouldn't it be great? It's right across from the high school. It's the perfect middle school location. It really is. And so if we can do it, if we can signal the market that this is what is coming, and we affect the market value of that as such. And we still manage to hit our housing element numbers, awesome.
Okay, again, back to my question, who does this for? City manager, Jerome Robinson. But with, there is a motion and and.
I don't know how extensive an analysis, so the, you're expecting, and and of course, we'll be willing to do it, but. Again, you'll have to, we'll come back and you'll have to prioritize different projects.
Totally fair. I don't expect, so to be honest with you, I don't expect that this is something that you're gonna come back to us immediately with. I just want it within the record that you're working on it, so that at the time that we're done with the housing element, we can go ahead, and it's probably gonna be a secondary process anyway. But we can just do it, and it's sitting on this property now. So because, because we talked about it tonight, and actually, Councilmember Nash, we left it at thirty six units rather than upzone it. Because we're seriously looking at it in this way. That's part of our discussion tonight. We're really letting people know we're serious about it. Otherwise, honestly, if we hadn't gone down that road, I may have been supporting you at upzoning it more than thirty six acres. But I really think we have that need in terms of city planning to go ahead and set this property aside in this manner and fashion, so that when these, when these. Buildings come down, that we've set the stage for that inverse condemnation.
And what I would like to do is make sure that we're looking at the entire site, and we're being proactive exactly in this way and. Making sure that we're signaling what we'd like to do to the extent that we're allowed to. But I think we we have control over our zoning.
Yeah, I I, I mean, like I said, I think it's really exciting. I don't understand how it works or what reverse condemnation is. So I I'm just confused, but hey, if you can get it going, great.
Yeah, so I'll I'll say, obviously. This is a a shot that will be heard, shall we say, and so it'll it'll be interesting. Councilmember Mueller, and then then I I'll be looking for a second.
Yeah, and to be clear, what will end up happening, because this is planning over time, right? And so this isn't something that would happen tomorrow, but what we're saying is at the time that there, that people are gonna, this is something that would eventually happen. Probably later near the lifespan of these buildings coming down, but we're planning for the future for that to happen. So.
Okay, we we have a a a second from from Vice Mayor Nash.
Okay, thank you. So I have a motion on the floor by City Councilmember Mueller and a second by Vice Mayor Nash to direct staff to do an analysis. In order to designate ten acres of the USGS site for school.
Middle school. Or we could just say act for educational.
For educational?
Yeah, virtue first to for for our school system, for our school district's educational facility.
Would you be willing to just to look at the entire site with that in mind, but look at the entire site and just see if there's anything? Have a community discussion that, is there anything more that we want to do with it? Again, just being proactive, being in control of our fate.
I think for now, I'd just like to leave it that, because I do want to get the thirty six housing units out of it. So there are thirty six housing units on two acres, then there's.
It's thirty six or two hundred. It's two hundred. Again, on the two acres.
No, thirty six or two hundred on the two acres.
Correct.
I'm I'm comfortable where staff is at with it right now, and then just with the ten, with the ten. So with the ten being set aside for the educational school district purposes, I'll defer to Councilmember Wilson's concerns about that.
It sounds like Councilmember Mueller has a vision, and it sounds good to me, so I'll defer to his. Concept, because I'm, to be honest, I'm getting really sleepy, but the idea of schools and housing both sound really great.
So so Vice Mayor Nash seconded. Yeah, I I don't think I have anything that. I do have one question. Do we have to notice the federal government? Okay, that that is. That is a question that I will leave someone. I see the city attorney has has come on.
I have come on to say that I do not know, and that there's a lot of unknowns about the requests that we will promptly look into. But I I think we need some more information.
Yeah, my my, there is some, not this, but my understanding is right, that that, oh, no, right, that that school site was acquired by eminent domain from Stanford.
Yeah, I mean, basically, in this area, you're, it's, you're, it's hard, it's two things, right? I mean, it's three things. One, it's like you have to have the money. But the bigger, but the constraining issue is you gotta find the acreage all in one place, right? And so to have this opportunity that fits within the housing element is actually pretty unique, and especially the location. The biggest impediment I see is just the fact that we have that brand new lab building there. But maybe that could be the school, yeah. I mean, so it'd be very interesting to see what happens. But no matter what, there's still the need to be money that's raised in order to go ahead and purchase it, but I think if we change. We indicate that we're changing the zoning, we will, we will, we'll affect the marketability of it and drop that price.
Cool. All right, CD Corrigan, let's let's call for the vote.
Thank you. So is there any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none, by roll call vote, City Councilmember Mueller.
Yes.
City Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
City Councilmember Woolison.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nash.
Yes.
Mayor Combs.
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Well, I think that that's, that's everything correct. Yes, we have, we have affected lots of people's property rights. Over the course of this, this this meeting, but anyway. Overall, I thought it was a very obviously productive meeting, and I I very much value the conversation. And 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 valued also that we we got to have a a dialogue about an issue that Councilmember Taylor has been passionate about for 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 some time. And so, so so, yeah, with that, this meeting is adjourned.